Called as Lacy State Council Work Session Order Director. Myself, Mayor, Councilmember Greysheim is here in the chambers. And Councilmember Vasquez, Danny Stedman are with us online. And Councilmember Cox had a prior engagement. I also want to acknowledge that we, the Lacy, are on the ancestral land of tribal people. Treaty of the Messing Creek, including the Skawee and tribe, the Skawson and tribe. That, and yet motions to approve.
I would move to approve the agenda as published.
I'll second. And move and second. Sorry, I don't have my microphone on. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in fear of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? And that motion now carries. We have approved this evening's agenda. First up on our approved agenda is a public comment. We did have one written public comment that should have gone out to the council. Be part of our full record. And we also have one person who signed up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Michael Cade, Executive Director of the Thurston Economic Development Council, just right down the street. I'm here to thank you for a couple of things. One is your long-term, longtime commitment to small business and the economy of Thurston County and this community. It's very impressive. The record speaks for itself. But also your proclamation recognizing this coming Saturday, a Small Business Saturday. And I have formal comments, and Mr. Mayor, I'll provide those written for you. But I'm going to go off script a little bit because I think it's important. We talk a little bit about why that proclamation is so impactful to me personally and professionally, and what it represents to this community. And I think sometimes we forget about what this economy is built upon. Two thousand, in the year 2000, Thurston County's economy had about 65% of all wages earned were in the public sector. We were government town, bar none. We were, that's just the way it was. It's not a bad thing, a good thing. It's a good, it was just a thing. Today, about 64% of wages are earned in the private sector. And what happened since then? That's small business, small business growth. There are about 13,000 businesses in Thurston County. Ninety-five percent of them are 10 employees or less. Of those, probably 75% are closely held. First generation, second generational businesses. Very impressive that these people stick to small business. What you've done is you've created an environment where that thrives. And it's important to think about how that thrives. Coming into the decade of 2000, you had a GDP of about $6.4 billion. Coming into 2020, we had a GDP countywide of about $16.5 billion. We've doubled it quite dramatically during that time. We've actually outpaced the national growth in Thurston County. That is done on the backs of small business, bar none, bar none. Then you have to start thinking about what happened during that time. It's the entrepreneurial ecosystem that you have encouraged, you have allowed, and you have sustained. And you should be recognized and thanked for it. And so your proclamation is recognition of that. I'm going to read some of the things that happened coming out of 2024 and 2025. And I know this is, you've heard these things before, but I want to put it in context of small business. And I want you to think about, I'm asking you to think about, how does that really occur? When you think about the organizations and the capacity building that you've spent your time. You have a full-fledged economic development department. That's not normal. It's very, very much appreciated. But you also supported the Veteran Center right down the street, a small business. Those folks launch businesses. You support the Washington Center for Women in Business, part of my organization, SBA program. We lost 125 businesses last year. They're all right here. You support the Small Business Development Center. This SBDC is the number one SBDC in the state. And they measure that by capital growth within their client base. It just doesn't happen because of, hey, we got this cool thing going on. It happens because we wrap around services around it. You've created the market. You've created the Lacy Maker space. You've endorsed the work of our Center for Business Innovation and the role that Midtown has in growing small businesses and growing that technology-based companies.
Just like that, you're out of time. But I'll let you wrap it up, buddy.
Let me wrap it up and I'm going to get to it. But I just want to make sure that the context of the next five things that I'm going to read to you were kind of in your mind. Coming out of 2024, the Milken Institute ranked us number nine in the country as having the best economy with the fourth best income equality. Those elements that I just talked about, that went into it. Ranked number two nationally by Shimmera Analytics as having the best economy and the first in high-tech growth. It's job growth, the small business, those and large businesses. Pew Research Center ranked us number one nationally for middle-class density at 66% of households, meaning we're growing the middle class as we're growing the economy. We're bringing that group of people along with it. We're ranked number two nationally by Business Travelers Destination for Women on Business Trips. And they specifically called out the Washington Center for Women in Business. So your proclamation is very much received, well-received by us. We're going to be posting that on our social media and put it on our website and we'll make sure everybody knows about it. But I wanted to thank you for your contributions. Those things do not happen without the alignment of strategic actions and strategic plans. This is hard work, and you're committed to it. I wanted to thank you for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening? Yeah, thank you. Okay, with that, let's go right into our next agenda, which is the 2026 State Legislative Agenda and Manual. For Shannon Bryan.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. We are here tonight to go over the 2026 State Legislative Agenda. We have our priorities, and then we also have our manual to go over. But before we jump into that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Enslo to give us kind of a look at what the environment is expected to be here in 2026.
Great, thank you, Shannon. Appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today. I want to start with providing a little bit about the political context. The overall picture is not a lot has changed last year. There were quite a few special elections this year due to the fact that with an incoming governor, there was a lot of legislators that were appointed to various positions, either in the administration directly or other cabinet-level agencies that created vacancies and then they filled them. But ultimately, even though there were some elections that were fairly hotly contested, the majorities didn't end up changing. So from a, just like who's in control and what are the margins, it remains the same. Last year, and I don't think I'm going out on a limb. You can just kind of look at various news reports and medias about kind of the disagreement between the majority parties in the House and the Senate and their approach to revenue versus what the governor was. You could tell that there was kind of lack of alignment. I don't think that's necessarily changed at a fundamental level. But what I think is different is this governor's been in place now for a year. There's been conversations and, and like, you know, you've got staff in place, you're established. So even though you might still not be aligned from the executive perspective, legislative perspective, I don't think there's going to be surprises. And I think that was a big part of the tension last year, was I think the legislature felt like they were surprised by the executive. Whereas I think this year, everybody, you know, the cards are kind of out on the table. And that does, you know, create less tension, even though I think philosophically some of that lack of alignment still exists. We're going to see a lot of those unresolved issues. So for context, this is the supplemental year, so it's a 60-day session. Washington State, as I know you know, but if there's anyone else listening, we operate on a biennial cycle. So we have a large cycle in even years, or in odd years, and then a short session in even years. And bills that were introduced last year come back this year. And they kind of come back at the last place they existed in their house of origin. So there were a lot of things that, that had some negative externalities that maybe hadn't been contemplated for cities, or maybe had, but were still being advanced, that we took some solace and success in fighting back, but those things are back. So more to come on that. There'll still be, you know, housing is, as a conversation, is not going away. The relationship between like cities' regulatory environment and what some of the objectives the state wants to accomplish hasn't fundamentally changed either. So we'll continue to see some of those tensions there. Some of the notable legislations last, legislation last year that was introduced in the House on kind of what authority cities have around setting regulations with respect to public spaces. That's going to be discussed again, and as well as just kind of generally like, what sort of facilities can be cited where or not. And so expect to hear more about that. I think I have another slide on this, but the Paid Family Medical Leave Program is a very popular program. And as such, is perhaps financially insolvent. So that's a question that probably needs to be figured out. And oh, yeah, it's an election year. So oftentimes, that creates some moderating effect on votes and choices. But I have one exception that I'll talk about on my next slide. We're still seeing some serious tension on, particularly on the operating revenue. The forecast three months ago said that the state was out of, out of balance by close to $1 billion for the remainder of the biennium. So that's one year's worth of state funding. It's about $40 billion. So depending on how you figure the math on that, that's in like the 5% to 2.5% kind of like tension that that billion dollars creates. Additionally, you know, they, they implemented some pretty significant tax reform in Bill 5814, primarily around additional sales tax on services. One of the, I was sitting at SOGO, the Student Orchestra of Greater Olympia in the Washington Performance Center about two weeks ago. And one of the perhaps unintended consequences of the service industry taxes that they were applying tax to student orchestras, like sales tax on the traditional night. And anyhow, those are, and I use that as an example because it's just one of the many. But honestly, the impact of that is really, in the grand scheme of things, like it's something that just is, is fun and interesting to highlight of those things that we don't think about. But school districts themselves are faced with, depending on the size of the school district, impacts in the millions of dollars that were unintended. So that has to, that is going to be contemplated. And, and every time you decide to exempt an entity that's less revenue that's available to fund the budget that you had enacted. So those are things to consider. A month ago, or six weeks ago, if you would ask me, are they going to consider any revenue? I would have said no, no one's talking about revenue. But then all of a sudden, things changed. It was starting to percolate even before the November elections. But I do think some of the national elections and maybe specifically the mayor's race in New York maybe influenced some people's appetite to consider a tax on high-wage earners. I've heard it referred to as like a millionaires, billionaires tax. No, no policy or no bill has been unearthed or produced. So I can't provide any details, but I know there has been significant discussion starting in the Senate and then migrating into the House about entertaining an income tax on some level of wage earners. I think conceptually, it's being talked about as a test case and not necessarily a budget balancer. So some questions as to whether that would be constitutional. Regardless of, I think it's fair to assume that that would go to the courts. So you wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to make a lot of assumptions about having that funding available until it works through the court process. So and then I guess lastly, I want to be careful how I characterize this because I, you know, depending on your perspective with respect to local government, you know, that, that there were some cuts that were impactful, whether it was to like model toxics cleanup, whether it was things like that. But they were manageable. A lot of the grant programs that we rely on, whether it's safe, you know, safer routes to schools, safe streets, things like that, were reduced, but still funded at like the 90% level. I just worry this year, I just worry this year, is what I'll say. We did pretty well from kind of what are the responsibilities of the state? What are the responsibilities of local government and that line being maintained? And I just, I worry a little bit. I already briefly mentioned that, you know, last year, the Employment Security Department had actually asked for 100 FTEs in the budget in order to like process all the, all the unanticipated demand on the program. The state, and it's funny, I list this as a challenge because, because I also think it's an opportunity. Isn't that, isn't that like what you do on an interview when you say like, this is my weakness, but it's actually a strength? Like the state is paying out a lot in legal liability. And historically, they have, and this is my characterization, not been a great partner when it comes to like examining liability and doing things in order to mitigate local government liability. So, but they're looking at it, definitely. And I think there is some opportunity to think about how we dovetail and what they're working on. But yeah, massive increase since 2018. And then opportunities. Modest in the transportation budget, modest in the capital budget. There is, there will be, there will, there's always a member request list. There's always a bucket of funding for local community projects. That's how the budget gets passed, even in tight years, so we'll see that. Housing, you know, like as I mentioned, is a priority. So thinking about reform and how to align with city imperatives. And I think, again, under the, the state's looking at ways to find efficiencies. And so that might behoove us as well, whether it comes to like planning timelines and schedules, whether it comes to like audit schedules and frequencies of audits, things like that. So there hopefully should be a conversation about just like some government efficiencies and whether we're doing things in the right frequencies and timelines and looking for the best way to maximize dollars. So those are some of the things I want to highlight at this point. I'm going to turn it over to Shannon. There aren't any other, any questions, but.
Before I start, I'll just pause there, maybe see if there are some questions for Brian.
Yeah, I don't, sorry, I didn't want to be out of order.
I think my biggest question and actually concern, and it has to be concern for every city, is looking at indigent defense standards. I mean, this is, this is the thing that's going to bankrupt cities. You know that, or it's going to have massive impact on public safety because we're going to have to start not filing charges in order to keep the balance going, to keep up with defense standards, which is, should be an unintended consequence. This has to be fixed somehow. And it's, it's not just Lacy, it's, it's every, everywhere. So like what's, where's the coalition sort of pushing back to find some reasonableness and a way forward? I mean, I'm all for making sure, you know, people are properly defended. But, you know, not in the, you know, you have to balance that on, you know, in terms of all of the other priorities we have as a community.
No, it's a great question. And you will find this concern reflected in our proposed state legislative agenda. And it is included in the slides, and I'll address it, the, you know, our proposal more in detail when we get to that. But you, you know, you raise a really interesting question. Obviously, we are not alone. Every municipality is, is facing this concern, as well as counties as well. And I, I would even submit to you that it's further exacerbated by the decisions around Blake, which was the court case that essentially led us to a situation where there's no felony drug offenses. And felonies, and I'm sorry if I'm belaboring this, but felonies were state of Washington versus someone. So they were, they were not municipal expenses, they were not misdemeanor cases. And right now, the only way is to wrap your arms around some of those individuals and help them get the help that they need and help them get the help that we want is to work through like a therapeutic or a drug court at the municipal level, which again, then is an expense that's cascaded down to us and drives, and drives an additional caseload. So even before you change the standards, there was impacts that stretched in our ability to perform. I believe the courts are also aware of the fundamental issue that there might not be individuals available to contract with. Like there might not be a workforce that supports this level of standard. In part, I think that's the logic behind their phase-in, is they hope that more people will become attracted to this as rates go up and more jobs are available. But, but it is a massive problem. And I think it's interesting to me that barely a year before the courts instituted these caseload standards, they threw out the case that the counties had before the courts. So the Counties Association sued the court saying, well, they sued the state. They sued the state saying that it's, that the indigent defense is an unfunded mandate, and you're not, you're not doing enough. And the courts essentially, essentially dismissed the case saying that the counties themselves didn't have standing because they weren't a defendant and they, therefore, they didn't like not have good defense. Which I think was a massive misstep because that was their opportunity right there to bring the state in as a meaningful partner. So I think that's what has to be addressed, is the conversation between the municipal, you know, us, the cities that are impacted with the courts and the state to really find some alignment about how we actually make a meaningful difference in funding that these now mandated standards.
I'll just add, Mr. Mayor, to, to the point of this is an issue that is across jurisdictions. The Association of Washington Cities, this is their top priority. It's also a top priority of the Association of Counties. And we do see across a lot of municipalities that this is on their agendas, just like it's on our agendas as well.
Okay, any other, any other questions?
Great, well, then I will jump into a review of the 2026 State Legislative Priorities.
Great, well then I will jump into a review of the 2026 state legislative priorities and then a, a quick overview of some of the additions that we've added to the policy manual, which speak to a lot of the things that Brian just brought up. So really quickly, we heard from you all last year of really streamlining the legislative agenda. And so what we've tried to do is put the top three items on the legislative agenda. So you can see here in the copies you've been provided, we've got the Thurston County Regional Basic Law Enforcement Academy at the Lacey Regional Training Center. We also have Authorized Sustainable Animal Control and Sheltering Funding Mechanism. And then a new addition, the other two had been on our previous priorities, is the Annexation Sales and Use Tax Credit Extension. And so those are the top three that are featured on one side. And then if you turn over the other side, there are an additional four items. And we'll get into each one of these here in just a second. So like I mentioned, the Thurston County Regional Training Academy, the Balia course here, is not something that's new. This council is very familiar with it. This has been on our legislative agenda now for several years as we've been developing the police station and training facility. And so just as a quick review, what we're asking for is $1 million out of the operating budget to be set aside annually for CJTC to operate a regional Balia at Lacey Training Facility. One of the things that, you know, we've been looking into and we've been asking, you know, other folks who have, you know, regional Balia courses, is kind of what are the benefits? And what we're seeing is we're seeing staffing changes across police departments. We're seeing vacancies. We also are going to have a $100 million, you know, grant program that's going to be launched. You know, folks who are going to be taking advantage of the 1/10th of 1% to increase law enforcement services. And so we anticipate that that's going to bring a lot more folks who need to go through the academies. And so it could create a demand on the existing infrastructure that's in place. And so as we're seeing these, you know, shortages, we're seeing these growths, you know, offering another regional academy would bring a lot of benefits. And one of the things, you know, I know, we all know, is we have a training center that is ready to go, right? I mean, it is purpose-built. It doesn't need to be, you know, kind of reshaped to really work for a Balia class. It's in a really good condition. There wouldn't be any capital dollars that would need to go into upgrading that training facility. We also know in conversations that when you have a regional academy, what you really see is an enhancement of local recruitment efforts. So you get more folks from the community who want to serve the community. Oftentimes, you know, having to go for a Balia class up in Burien for an extended period of time really is a barrier for participation. You know, it takes you away from your family, your friends, your support systems, and it becomes impossible for you to continue in that program. The same thing holds for trainers as well. It certainly attracts and brings in a lot more local trainers to train people who are going to be out in your community. Like I mentioned, it's going to be an effective use of public dollars, especially limited public dollars because that training facility already exists and could serve more than the five counties around here, but certainly the five counties around here. And one of the things we did add this year to our priorities is just, you know, looking to the future. We know CJTC is evaluating their options for their main campus. And so, you know, just recognizing that, you know, this could be something that we do for a period of time, you know, for example, five years, and then evaluate the effectiveness and also where CJTC may be in their process to continue on, you know, with main campus or regional satellite campuses. Brian, oh, sorry.
We not too long ago did the tour of the facility. And we had one senator and one legislator. We had, I think it was Bateman and Senator McEwen. And, I mean, they both, in conversation with both of them, seemed very supportive. You know, where that'll go, who knows? But at least at that point, they seemed to be very supportive of helping us with this, so.
Where do we come up with a, the dollar amount? Was it based off of other regional?
Correct, looking at operationals, operations, not necessarily capital. Again, recognizing that there have been requests for capital in addition to operations.
I mean, the capital cost for them to do what they want to do at their, at the training in Burien, you're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. I mean, that's a big, big money project.
Absolutely. Brian, anything you would add?
And just to, just to follow up on your comment, Councilman Greenstein, about Senators Bateman and Senator McEwen. They did, Senator Bateman's office did follow up and set up a meeting between Senator Bateman and Senator McEwen and Brian and I in January to talk more about this and coordinate some of the conversations regarding this.
That was what I was going to respond to. I mean, you know, obviously, we've talked about this. And one of the main advantages, one of the main, she already described all the like main, like policy and social advantages of having a regional center. But just financial, just nuts and bolts, the capital costs, aside from it just being boring, we, we don't need a commercial kitchen, we don't need, we don't need dormitories, don't need, need all those, you know, not superfluous, but, you know, we're not, you know, facilities that are, are not needed if you're not having people, you know, spend the night and be away from their families for weeks at a time, so.
Great, well, moving on to our second item here. This is again a returning item that we had previously. And that is to look into creating some sort of animal control and sheltering district. This is essentially a funding mechanism that would help support our animal control and sheltering. And we're currently working with a statewide stakeholder group to get some feedback and information to last year's bill sponsor, which was Representative Partially. And so the conversations continue, and we're hoping to meet with Representative Partially next week to go over what could be some possibilities for advancing this bill. It previously showed up last legislative session as HB 1985. Any questions on this one?
I'm trying to remember this, we're only, is this a property tax or a sales tax?
So again, where, where we're at with the stakeholder group is we're looking at a couple of options because we heard some feedback, again, from Representative Partially. And so what we're planning to do is bring five considerations and get some feedback from Representative Partially. So what we do have on that includes a property tax, there is a sales tax, and there's a couple of other items we're looking at, such as a household tax rate. We're really exploring and trying to turn over every single stone to figure out what could be the right fit for this particular bill.
I just, I know how difficult a time we've had with the, you know, there's a lot of misperception around property taxes and the impact on, you know, households and that, you know. And so I, I wouldn't want to be fighting for a mechanism that we'll have a difficult time implementing, you know.
No, that's a great point, and that's something we certainly consider. I think the other part of the conversation that Shannon was really helpful in pointing out is, is rightsizing it as well. Some of the property tax options were, quite frankly, not, not, fiscally responsible isn't the right word, but they, they, it was too, it was too much of a spigot to turn on for this purpose, which, you know, is then a question of, so those are some of the things that we're weighing and trying to find the Goldilocks approach, I guess, the just right.
And we hope to have an update on that here shortly. Again, we're meeting with Representative Partially next week. So we'll have hopefully some more direction on what that looks like.
I, I understand that, you know, animal control and sheltering is an issue, again, across, you know, a lot of jurisdictions across the state where everyone's sort of struggling with trying to figure out how to provide this service. And so, you know, hopefully, we're engaging, you know. Is AWC a part of this and have they been updated?
They are aware of our efforts. At this point, I think we're still trying to build a little bit more of a coalition, seeing other entities that might be interested. We have to do our work internally or locally and, and have a preferred alternative before we can really start shopping it. Because right now, it's more been in the abstract, which again, we've gauged some interest, but it's, haven't nailed down any guaranteed support until we actually have a proposal for people to review and comment on.
And I, you know, I think, looking at AWC's 2026 legislative priorities, you know, one of the things that they've been focusing on is, you know, flexibility and tools. And so that is in alignment with that. To the point of who we've been engaging with, we've been engaging with municipalities. We've also been engaging with other regional animal control shelters. We've been engaging with nationwide animal groups and trying to get some feedback and, you know, seeing if there's other things out elsewhere in the country that maybe we can take a look at that would apply here. You know, and what we're finding is that, you know, we may be on the forefront of looking towards a tool like this. All right, well then, moving on to the third item, that is the Annexation Sales Tax Credit Extension. I know this has come up in conversation with this council. And so, you know, we recognize that the current authority for accessing the sales tax credit will expire in 2028, which is right around the corner with us coming into 2026. And so the request would be to extend the sales tax credit. And what we've put in here is a 10-year additional horizon, but working towards any extension. So that way, we can continue to have, you know, collaborative and considerate conversations with partners who may be involved in any potential future studies or actions. What we did find, taking a look across the state over the last couple of years since this was implemented, is that no other jurisdictions have met the threshold to be able to access this. And so it's kind of a indicator that, you know, these types of projects take a lot of time, takes a lot of conversation, a lot of intentionality. And so requesting that this be extended so that more jurisdictions can consider it as part of their future planning.
Are we alone on this one?
No. So the initial authorizing legislation was, the most vocal partners were Snohomish County and then City of Vancouver and Clark County.
That makes sense.
And as Shannon mentioned, no one's been able to move forward with meaningful annexations to utilize this tax credit since that legislation was enacted either in Snohomish County or in Clark County, largely because it's not enough. You know, when you look at the lack of alignment between the city standards and then the county standards within UGA, just, you know, from an infrastructure standpoint, but then also just the ongoing costs associated with providing a service, it can be daunting. And I'm, I'm just speaking broadly, and I'm obviously not speaking for, for you specifically. But those have been the, the conversation points that have been brought up in those other regions as to why they haven't moved forward. So they're looking at pieces like this, extending it, and then also even additional revenue tools. Without getting too much into the details, a regional fire authority, or, yes, a regional fire authority, which would give a tool for cities to have an equivalent level of funding for fire. I know, again, it's not Jermaine here, but just a broad conversation about how do we actually get things to pencil? Because the, quite frankly, in Clark County, the county is making public statements about, well, we'll go broke if the city doesn't annex this. And then the city of Vancouver is saying, we will go broke if we do. And it's, and they're racing to say, well, we'll go broke in four years, and well, we'll go broke in 10, and so.
Does the fact that no jurisdictions have met the threshold make it a much harder sell? I mean, what's their reason for extending it when no one's taking advantage of it yet anyway?
So, good question. The hardest sell is if like everyone had jumped in full freight and it'd end up costing the state a lot of money.
Hasn't cost them anything.
Hasn't cost them anything. So I, I don't think, I, I mean, you ask a good question. And, and your point is, is like, why keep open an option that hasn't been utilized? And why, why would you, because we do think it works in concert with some of these other tools that might take time to get in place as well.
See, I'm sort of on the, I, I don't know what the right number is. I don't think it's, I think 10 years is too much. Because I think at some point, you have to have a deadline in order to actually cease some movement. But the, the biggest issue I, I see in this is this, and in some ways solves, helps solve some of the financial issues for cities, but does nothing for counties except to get it off their books, you know? And that is a big incentive in some ways, but they're going to see that they need it lost in revenue. And so it, it's like you have to have, you're expecting, you know, elected officials to be able to think strategically long-term, and that's maybe not always the, the best.
Sure.
Attribute we've seen, so in my experience, you know, has seen. So it's, I think you can, you can, it takes a lot of work to get there and relationship building and trust and all these things. And so it takes some time, but if we just push off for 10 years, I don't know if we'll ever get there either. You know, like there needs to be a, like, you gotta do something here, and then we need a. And I, I think there also has to be some sort of benefit to the county short-term as well. And I haven't quite figured that part out either, but.
Those are great observations. I think one of the things I would highlight is in the, in the underlying legislation, there is the requirement of an interlocal between the, the city and the county in which certain things around, you know, with respect to how the money is used in the area in which it's used in the infrastructure and things like that. So, so there is a seat at the table for the county. So it's not, it's not a, in my opinion, an unequal, just unequal tool that just helps cities. The other piece that I think is important to highlight is, I do appreciate your, your point about just kind of like, you know, the deadline to make a decision. It's, part of the way the mechanism works is there's a certain amount of years in which you get to receive the benefit. And that is where some of the value that we are also looking at capturing by extending the deadline, you could maximize the number of years you're able to grab that benefit. So I think those are the two things, but you do make a good point.
So you're right, I am totally in favor of extending.
But maybe not this far.
Well, extending, if you extend everything out another 10 years, when you can do it, and then how long you can recoup it. So if you go from now 10 years, and if you get right on it, it can go to 20 years, right? You know what I'm saying? Then, then that is the considerably bigger benefit for, for, to come up with something like that.
Then there's a reason to do it as soon as possible.
Then there's a reason to do it, right? Then there's a reason to do it as soon as possible. And that might be enough for, for, for to get some people to, cities go, okay, let's get on this. And the longer we wait, the less attractive it is for a city to do it. And now you're giving some sort of deadline in there that may move this along.
I think, you know, an important thing to highlight too is that a city could move forward much quicker, city and county, than the 10 years that's being, you know, projected here. And so recognize that if a city, you know, and a county were working and they had, you know, a good, you know, ILA, an agreement in place, I mean, they could move forward with implementation two years from now, four years from now. Doesn't mean they have to take it out to the furthest extent.
Oh, I agree, but I don't think, unless you add another, some benefit on the other hand and some incentive to get it done sooner, I think you're just going to end up pushing everything off and get to a point where, you know.
I understand. I need a deadline to get work done.
Yeah, I think almost everyone does.
I'm a Thursday person.
But there has to be some incentive too. It's not just a, a stick, there's got to be a carrot involved as well.
So do you anticipate some coalition building will be necessary to, to make this happen? Or is, or do you anticipate that the state is like, hey, it was on the table, you didn't do it, we're removing it? Or are they amenable to such a request?
I would definitely anticipate coalition building on this one.
Yeah.
We were fortunate that Snohomish County was involved because it was the chair of the House Finance Committee, Representative Byrd, who represents that region of the state. And it was her bill, and she is obviously, she's influential and continues to have a bright future in that caucus. So it's a helpful ally with respect to this issue. And I, and conversations I've had so far would indicate that they're, they're interested.
Has the state kind of put out a position?
I'm sorry.
Has the state put out any kind of position?
Well, it doesn't cost the state anything at this point, so.
I haven't, I mean, we haven't had an opportunity to deliberate it in front of a, a larger audience, but so far, I haven't heard any pushback. The thing that makes me a little bit nervous is anytime you ask for an extension of something before the final year. And it's not that, it's not that, okay, at the end of the day, if I'm a legislator, even, I get three, three things, right? Or I get to fight for three things. And if I've got two bills that I'm choosing from, and one I can come back and still do next year, I might, and so that's why it is a little bit of a challenge. But it is really important for us to start the conversation now and get it socialized and build that coalition and identify if there are any concerns. But, but I just wanted to flag that for you. I'm not necessarily worried about pushback, I'm worried about timing. But from our perspective, it really makes sense to get these issues on the table sooner than later and then socialize it in a broader conversation about why, why no one's walking into their UGAs? How that's connected to the housing conversation? Because the area within the UGA has a whole different set of standards. There's no missing middle, there's no MFT. different set of standards, there's no missing middle, there's no MFTE, there's all these things, and so all these pieces kind of go together. And that's why it's important to talk about them all at the same time.
Well, I think, I think it'd be a good strategy to add a little carrot along with a stick on this one, so...
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that takes us to our fourth item, which is a, another reoccurring item, and that is for a long-term funding solution for the right-of-way initiative programs. And so, what we're, you know, recognizing is, obviously, the state's provided some leadership in responding to the homeless crisis, including the right-of-way program and then the encampment program. And these have been, you know, short-term packages, and so what we're looking for is kind of a more longer-term, sustainable approach, where instead of coming back, you know, every couple of years to the state for funding, to continue to support things like, you know, maple court operations, that there is some sort of predictable and sustainable funding mechanism moving forward for those types of projects. Any questions or comments on this one?
When the right-of-way dollars were packaged up and put out, does anybody remember what that number was, the total? I know how much it was for Lacey, but I mean for the state. Because I remember Spokane got a substantial amount, Seattle got some pretty good amount...
They came, amount came to Thurston County, I think, if I remember correctly, around 39 million, 39 to 42 million in that ballpark. Originally, we were allocated 24 million, but then Snohomish County didn't take some, so we got ours increased.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering what the state total was.
I, yeah, we will get back to you.
Yeah.
I would feel uncomfortable throwing out a number off the top of my head.
That was, it was always the sort of, it seemed, seemed to me, even at that time, it was always the sort of the worry, like, they throw out a bunch of money to try to deal with an immediate problem without a plan on how do you fix it long-term, and not just short-term? You know, and so, like, it's hard to blame the nonprofits who jumped at those dollars, you know, because it was a windfall, but, you know, it's, three years later, like, and now we're, you know, we're all, everyone's in trouble, and maybe it wasn't managed, you know, it was dollars out the door quickly without a long-term plan to sustain it.
No, you're spot on, and I forget, I forget the other, the other pot of money that was in the capital budget specifically around, like, acquisition of existing structures, but it was, like, there was that real ephemeral moment where there were actual, like, hotels, motels available for purchase, that we would argue a reasonable cost, and, you know, that was gone in 18 months, you know, or, you know, or 24, you know, and you're right, I, there was a lot of reacting, but now it's time to not just react, but to actually plan and be able to have some sense of what it looks like moving forward through time.
Well, you know, surprise, surprise, the motels and hotels that went out of business early on in COVID were not necessarily the nicest buildings, right? Which is why they were like jumping at dollars, and oh, lo and behold, those buildings actually need help, because they're old buildings that, you know, weren't meeting up, you know, it's like, duh.
Perhaps they needed a little bit of remediation.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then we put people in them that, and then spend the money again.
Yeah.
Just to answer the question on total statewide funding, it was just over $143 million on the initial allocation in 2022.
Big number.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, it's broken down between one, five different counties.
Wow. Okay.
All right, well, moving on to item number five, and we've talked a little bit about the law enforcement grant program, but the request would be to take a look at the law enforcement grant program, and really to tweak a few items, including prioritizing grant funding for accredited agencies, like the city of Lacey. Accreditation means that, you know, the department meets established best practices, this includes use of force policies, training policies, operational efficiencies, reducing risk and liability, and increasing community engagement. It also helps, you know, show that departments are operating with transparency, accountability, and a commitment to continuous improvement, and I know Chief could probably speak to all of this in a lot more detail, but what we're asking for is, again, to prioritize those agencies that are accredited. In addition to that, of extending the grant funding period 36 months, so the way that it's functioning right now is that there was a 36-month window from when it was enacted, and so we're eating into that time. And so, it is, what we're asking for is 36 months from when you receive grant funding, so that way you get the full three years, rather than potentially, you know, two and a half years or two years. And as part of that, we're also asking for an expedited grant funding review process, really taking a look at streamlining, getting those grant dollars out to jurisdictions. As of right now, we aren't aware of any grant funding that has gone out. Looks like they're prioritizing, really focusing on sales tax accreditation, which is a part of this bill, and so looking forward to really streamlining how we can get those grant dollars out in addition to that, to start that process of bringing on officers using that grant funding.
When did the 36 months start?
I believe back in July.
July 1st of this year.
July 1st? So, it's not three, it's not three years of grant funding once you start, it's three years from July?
Correct, as current, as of this current...
So, every month that you're waiting, we're digging into that three years.
Correct.
Wow. Okay. Comes less valuable every day.
Any other questions on that one? All right, well, then we'll move on to number six, which is the transportation benefit district. The request is for approval of council manic authority. I think we are all very familiar with the transportation benefit district, and how critical it is to funding transportation projects here in the city of Lacey, as well as cities across Washington State. And the request is to amend the statute to remove reoccurring voter approval requirements and make those extensions council manic, and this is in alignment with other sales tax. So, for example, public safety sales tax, you adopt it once, that one-tenth or two-tenths or three-tenths of a percent are in play permanently, whereas the transportation benefit districts, you have to go back to the voters every 10 years, as we are very familiar. We received an update from our Public Works Department a couple of weeks ago about taking a look at 2026 building to potentially go back out to the voters in 2027 for extending the transportation benefit district. So, really, the request is, you know, if you do get voter approval, to make this a permanent, you know, sales tax, rather than something where you'd have to go out every 10 years. And part of that is to, you know, really help with long-term planning, you know, recognizing that infrastructure planning doesn't happen over a couple of years, it happens over several decades. It also creates, you know, some administrative burdens and costs, and it really risks service disruptions if that funding is potentially taken away or diminished moving forward. And so, I'll stop there and see if there's any questions.
Well, my concern with this is, I think you make it more different, it'd be great for us, because we've already passed, the public has already passed it for us, but in general, I think that can make it much more difficult to get that initial approval from the public when you go out to vote, because one of the selling points is that it sunsets, and that you're gonna get to decide to vote, you'll get to vote again whether we continue it. The idea that it's a permanent tax could make it much more difficult to sell, you know, to get the public on board.
Can you...
For us, it'd be fine, because we've already have it, we've already gone to the public, so if we could extend it forever, great.
Could, can you clarify that? So, are you saying that if they haven't implemented it council-matically, they have to go out for a vote first, and then from that point on, it's, it's, or are you, are you saying that this will give any council that hasn't, even if they haven't passed the transportation benefit district, a council-manic authority?
No, so you would still have to go out at least once to get approval from the people for transportation benefit district. It would just make it more aligned to, again, the public safety tax, where once you do get that approval, it would continue in perpetuity, or potentially for a longer period of time.
Yeah.
But I, I do want to just highlight, there is a one-tenth of 1% of transportation benefit district that is currently council-manic.
Yeah. That's right.
Yeah, I'm just pointing, I thought it's an important thing to think about the other side of that, because I do think that it could make it more difficult to pass the initial without having any sunset. I mean, the idea that you're passing a tax now that's permanent.
I can see that.
Did you have something, Brian?
No.
Okay.
Moving on to number seven, which I know we've talked about here already, and that is public defense standards. And I think, like we've stated earlier, obviously, this will have significant impacts to the city of Lacey. You know, when we have an unweighted misdemeanor case load of 400 going over a 10-year period down to 120, this will significantly increase our need for public defenders, increasing anywhere from our current need, which is around four to five, all the way up to potentially 13, 14 public defenders, and so you can understand, the costs over that time are projected to increase rather significantly. In fact, our current estimates, and we are continuing to work through this process, is that over that 10-year horizon, we'd see about $4 million of additional funding that would be needed for public defense. And so, we recognize that without any additional tools from the state, that this could have significant impacts on city operations and services. And so, what we're urging is that to work with the legislature, relevant agencies, to figure out solutions to funding gaps, and to work with cities in partnership, in alignment, again, with what we already talked about, the Association of Washington Cities and other groups that are interested in this.
So, Brian, can, can you, so, did this go up to the state Supreme Court? And there's, there's no ability to go above the state Supreme Court, like to District Court, or, you know, the Ninth District Court? Has there ever been...
No, not for matters of the state constitution. And I, and I'm checking myself, I'm wondering if, I think it went all the way up to the state Supreme Court.
It did? So, effectively, to maybe give a summarized background history, so you had the Washington State Bar Association provide...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I think, were you, the, you, were you, the question you were asking me about was the, the county's association lawsuit?
Yes.
Yes, that's the question he was asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not the fact that...
Where the standards came from.
The standards, yeah, okay. Which are, and Shannon is correct, the standards are, are bar association recommendations that are, are presented to the, the state Supreme Court, that then they can choose to adopt, which they did last...
Last year, and I just want to recognize that as part of what they considered, they really only considered the caseloads. There were a lot of other recommendations by the Washington State Bar Association made at that time, but what the Washington State Supreme Court looked at specifically was cases, and the recommendation from the bar association was for a much shorter window for rolling out this program, and so the Supreme Court provided a 10-year window to meet the new standards.
Is doing it any quicker than that nearly impossible.
Mr. Mayor, I'll have to check. Because obviously, as I indicated, I thought, I thought so, but I'm not at the 95% confidence interval, so, let me get back to you one.
Yeah, it just seems like, I mean, I don't know.
But, you know, the, all the cases against the state are held in Thurston County, so sometimes my brain gets a little bit confused, because it's like, well, I know it was here locally, so it must have been the Supreme Court, but it also might have been Judge Leese or something like that at Thurston County Superior Court, so I'll have to check.
I'm just trying to figure out, like, what's the best path to find some, you know?
Yeah.
If, if the courts maybe missed a chance to, you know, intervene here on some common sense, maybe there is, it makes sense to...
Oh, if they're given a second chance, like, would, yes.
You know what I'm saying, it's like...
Motion to reconsider.
Yeah, well, much, well, yeah, we're, yeah, we're go, we're go above, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know exactly, I know exactly what you're saying, and I think it's a good suggestion, so I will, I will look into that, and I'll make sure I respond to Shannon, and she can socialize it to all of you, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're getting at.
Yeah.
Is there an opportunity to kind of get it, now that they've made this decision?
Yeah.
Maybe other choices maybe make more sense.
Yeah.
I think the last thing I would just add here is that, in addition, we are requesting the state take a look at how it evaluates some of its formula funding for public defense. So, the city has been the recipient of several grant programs from the state, and so just taking a look at, you know, what is the share that is going to different jurisdictions, and so that's part of this request as well. All right, well, that wraps up the legislative agenda. One thing I do want to highlight that's typically been on the legislative agenda, but we don't currently have it on right now, is a statement that the city of Lacey is supportive of legislative priorities of other local and regional groups, and so that's typically included, things like the Association of Washington Cities, South Sound Military and Communities Partnership, Thurston County Shared Legislative Agenda, Lot Clean Water Alliance, the Regional Housing Council, Thurston Regional Planning Council, and last year, we also included the Washington Recreation and Park Association. And so, we do have at least drafts, if not final copies, of all of those legislative priorities, and we can certainly make sure to circulate that, but I just wanted to pause and see if that is the direction of the council to continue consideration of including those as part of the legislative priorities moving forward.
You have one more slide to, at least I have one more slide on.
I do, on the manual.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, yep, but I just wanted to check on that item. See a couple thumbs up over here?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll make sure to add that in there. All right, so the last thing I just wanted to touch on is that everything we went over for priorities has been added and included in the Legislative Policy Manual, and again, the policy manual is really to help kind of give a broader picture of the city's stances on things moving into the session. It helps me, it helps Brian, it helps our legislators to understand kind of broadly what we're looking at, in addition to our priorities. And so, I did want to highlight that we've added a couple of additions, including the, what's in our priorities. So, a couple of things we've already talked about, of protection of local funding for state-manded responsibilities, so making sure that, you know, dollars that have been historically set aside for, you know, purposes of local government remain there for local government use, rather than being used for other purposes. We've had something in our manual to the next bullet item, which is sustainable, unsustainable unfunded mandates, but just wanted to highlight a couple of things that we've seen come down the pike over the last couple of sessions, you know, including, you know, responsibility for the state right-of-way, encampment resolution program, some of the Land Use and Growth Management Act items, homeless laws, so just making sure that we have a statement in there of retaining local control on local topics. Modernizing the public notice and ordinance publishing requirements. Effectively, the RCW reads that you have to have a paper of local record where you publish everything, and what we're finding is that oftentimes, these are really inaccessible because they're behind paywalls, and so people can't access them, and so advocating that if you have an open and freely available website, that that should suffice for publishing for notifications. Support for making permanent public facilities district funding, so we all know the CARPFD receives the state sales tax credit, and that has received some extensions over the last couple of years, taking that funding into the 2050s, and so we've just put a placeholder in here, thinking to the future of, you know, continuing to think about long-term funding options for that. An update on the Landlord-Tenant Act, and it's, you know, specifically focused on emergency housing and rules and regulations associated with that. Updating that cities are eligible for youth recreational facility grant programs, and then finally, another kind of sunset item, and that is the additional public facilities district extension. There is legislation that allows existing public facility districts to create an additional public facilities district, and that is sunsetting in 2026, so looking to just extending that so that conversations can continue across Washington State and across different public facility districts on what that could look like.
Can you explain to me, I know, I, we've recently heard about, oh, you can do a second PFD, but the second PFD isn't a part of the state's, right?
Correct. It is not part of the state's sales tax, and...
How is that funded?
How is, it, it's funded by a couple of different mechanisms, potentially. It can be a sales and use tax that is voter-approved. It could also be different admissions fees, parking fees, there are a number of different funding mechanisms that a PFD can consider as part of their operations.
Originally sponsored by Senator Brad Hawkins out of, like, the Chelan...
Chelan County.
Yeah, Chelan, for the purpose, it was a pool, wasn't it, Rick, in Wenatchee?
Chelan, Douglas County, and Wenatchee, East Wenatchee, all working on a project.
And if I didn't say it, I think that's a really good thing to point out, too, is that that additional public facility district is, needed to be used for an aquatic center or sports facilities. It's got a smaller scope than the original public facilities district. It's got a smaller scope than the original public facilities district.
Couldn't use it for a performing arts center or convention center or something?
For example, just to emphasize, though, if they propose a sales tax, then it would be a voter-approved additional sales tax on, you know, not, not part, not a sales tax, it'd be part of a state share. So they, it'd be a new sales tax.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, I'm aware of, yeah. That's, that's a big difference, because-
Different current.
Yeah, huge difference.
So last thing I'll just make a note of is we also removed a couple of sections that have been addressed in previous sessions, are no longer identified as priorities. So wildland urban interface and increased housing density, we've had this come up several times over the last couple of sessions, and then parks RX programs. So with that, we've reached the end of the presentation. Are there any additional feedback that we can take? We do plan on bringing this back to council next week. Is there anything else that we should contemplate and consider?
I think, I think that's, we got it covered.
Great, well, thank you, council.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Speaking of public facilities districts, let's go into our next item, which is our rack improvements, and where we're at on that.
Mayor and city council, as Jen and Brett and Troy go their way up to the table, I just wanted to do a quick setup for this conversation. As council's aware, we've been talking about the extension of the public facilities district, the capital area regional public facilities district tax extension. And in order to do that, you'd have to extend your existing bonds, or refinance your existing bonds, or reissue bonds under current, before the current bonds expire. And there's two projects. One is the regional athletic complex, and the other one is the hands-on children museum. And just recently, the city of Olympia has worked with the capital area regional public facilities district to issue those bonds, so that's one step. The second step to make sure that extension occurs is the issuance of the bonds for the regional athletic complex. So in April 2023, or, excuse me, April 2024, we had a work session with city council to talk about the need to start moving forward on developing designs for what was then Rack Phase Three. And we were looking at the undeveloped parcel on the west side of Marvin Road as the future expansion of the regional athletic complex. And we started that process then with the idea that we'd start commissioning some design concepts to get an idea of what could be the possibility between a combination of either a baseball field and softball field complex, soccer, or a combination of the two, and on some multipurpose fields. We came back in June of 2025 with the, kind of the layout of those, those various concepts. We came back with three concepts, with some preliminary estimates, and of course, as the council probably remembers, those estimates came in very high, between, I think, if I remember right, $45 million and $60 million, depending on the scale and the type of complex. So again, with the PFD extension and the capacity for issuing bonds for capital improvements, we were looking more in the $12 million range, because we also need to use some of those dollars to continue our maintenance and operation of the rack. So through that conversation, the work session in June of 2025, council gave the direction to proceed with design concept, but to focus on field enhancements and conversion of a grass soccer field or turf on the existing facilities in the rack. And so tonight, our teams here to kind of give a check-in, an update on, on where we are in those designs, we're just about at the 30% design phase, and this is the point in time where, as we get to 30% design, we'll go right into finishing those designs over the next year in 2026 for final construction drawings, so we're in position to issue bonds in 2027, meeting our deadline. So again, Jen and Brett and Troy will be here to just kind of give a highlight of the 30% designs, where we are, and what the project's starting to look like, and some preliminary estimates.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. So I'm going to touch on the timeline, show you the estimates and the concepts, and then kick it over to Troy to talk about the issuing of the debt. Here's the timeline, this will look familiar. We did add a red vertical line here to show you where we're at currently. As Rick said, we're in the 30% design process with plans to move to 60% in January, as you can see, kind of late in the year 2025 there, up on the screen. And I think, I think Rick got the rest of the talking points for that one. And actually, this one, too, council had directed staff to focus efforts on existing rack developments on the east side of Marvin as a, as the best next step of the longer-term vision. We've got three concept slides to share with you tonight that break the project into three buckets. And along with these concept slides, we have corresponding preliminary design estimates, and we'll walk you through those, but this one shows an overview of the numbers, and so it's a kind of a nice one, just to see the three different buckets that we're going to talk about. And we can come back to this, because it's a good summary, but we'll, we'll start here, we'll go through the concepts, and then if we need to, we'll touch back. But as you can see, the base bid here is coming in at an estimated $7.4 million, and the base bid items are listed there down below. The base bid alternatives add another $3.5 million, and so you can see the cumulative total there on the right. And hopefully, we could get some or all of the base bid alternatives, depending on how the pricing comes in. And then potential future improvements, $21.7 million, and those are those ones where we would need a partner to do. But I do want to make sure and add that these numbers do include an estimated total, so it includes design, inflation, and tax.
Real quick.
Yeah.
Let me try to hear it right. The, the revenue from this would support about a $12 million bond, is that what you said?
So the base bid improvements, this is the first bucket that we'll talk about. The main focus is converting the natural grass soccer field number two to synthetic turf. Oh, is this a pointer right here? And adding lights, you can see them there over on the east side, with the purpose, oh, do I have a pointer? I should do that. Noticing how small, yeah. Yeah.
The low-tech way to do it.
I think, oh, I do have it, Rick. Thank you. Yeah, I just have to hold it.
I think it's me.
Oh, is it you? Thank you. Okay, sorry about that. I think it'd be easier if I just showed with this thing. Okay, so yeah, this is field two that's currently grass, and that would be converted to synthetic turf. And then here, you see the additional light poles. There's poles here already existing, so it would just be a matter of adding the fixtures and the lights to those current poles, and then, but these poles would need to be installed. So the purpose, oh, go ahead.
And there are poles on the other side, behind the sevens as well, on the far side? Is there, because is there any lights around that field right now?
Oh, yes, yes, see number seven, those are, yes, thank you, those are existing.
Okay, those are existing.
This, this field is synthetic turf, and it's lighted right now. Yep, so it would be addition of the lights, and then also seating over here, that you can see in yellow. This bucket, so the purpose would be extending field use hours, so that community groups could use the field longer. This bucket also includes additional seating, like I've mentioned just now, and then various fencing upgrades, including around soccer, too. But there are some fencing, some things we can do with fencing to help with ticketing for this field, without having to do the full improvements.
How much seating is that, Jen?
This one indicates 500. And then what's not shown here is a baseball complex. This base project also includes finishing outfield netting on baseball one and two, which is something that we've been trying to do for a number of years. We do actually have some funds set aside for this, and frankly, it should have been done when, when the rack was built. But it's just one of those things that just needs to get finished. So basically, we will be able to, to get those fully. One of the fields is half, has half of the netting, and one of them does not have any at all. And so that's going to protect pedestrians and folks driving in the roadway from balls being hit over the fence. This is where the estimated $7.4 million is for the base bid improvements. And then the alternative items that we touched on would be, you know, a few alternates being considered, so depending on pricing, like we said, these include Wi-Fi upgrades and expansion, hardscape improvements, and additional fencing upgrades, should adequate funding be available. So let's take a look here, we've got, we've got baseball field Wi-Fi improvements. Oh, sorry, that one's not, that one's not pictured. So the baseball complex would be the priority for the Wi-Fi adds. We already don't have adequate Wi-Fi in that complex, and so that one would take priority, but then also getting Wi-Fi added to fields one and two here. If the pricing would work out, we could potentially do field four as well. That one's actually not pictured there, but it's just, it's the one just up from here, and it's got the rugby goals. And so if it's possible to get that done, that would be great.
Is Wi-Fi something that's being requested by the people who rent the fields, or is that just something that we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the tournament directors and users.
Because they want to livestream their event, and they can't do it, or the players don't have adequate-
Okay.
Yeah, so it would support broadcasting, streaming, and just internet-based connectivity, general connectivity. And then we've got backstops proposed at fields one and two, so you can see these in the red there. The only one that's existing right now is the, the one on the north end of field one, so it'd be a matter of adding, now my battery died, I think, adding down to the south side of field one and two, and then also on the north side of two. There's another location that's not pictured, but it's field six, and that is protecting errant balls from a playground that's existing. So that would be another one of the backstops that we would add in. The other thing we could do is concrete replacement in the baseball complex, and this one is something that would be replacing the existing porous concrete. This is a costly item that we have to contract out for the maintenance of it, and we have to do that every other year, and the concrete is degrading pretty quickly. It's at the end of its life, anyway, and the method to clean it actually shortens the lifespan even more. So this is something that hopefully we could get done. It's something that's going to have to be done, anyway, so. So that estimate for those is $3.5 million for those adults. And then this shows the potential future improvements. Council had directed staff to determine high-level cost estimates for additional improvements that would need to be funded by a potential partner in the future, and these improvements would allow for more competitive teams to use the facility, with the goal of even more increased economic impact. So you can see here locker room and restrooms. There it is. Concession stand here. You can see a proposed stadium with bleachers, stadium seating with bleachers, covered bleachers, and a press box. And then proposed bleachers over here on the east side as well.
What would be the increase in seating from the 500 before?
Oh, so this is a thousand.
Yeah, somewhere between $1,000 and $1,500.
Yep.
Could have to look into the exact number.
Yeah.
That's what a lot of the higher soccer requires, like 1,500 seats.
Yeah, and this, this is locker rooms, too, right?
Locker rooms.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that was, I thought that was kind of weird, locker rooms are right up front, but-
What was that?
I, I thought, the, the place where the locker rooms are, I thought that was, I thought that was, like, going to be concessions or something, I don't know, it seems like right up front. Locker rooms are usually at the back, but I don't design these things, so I'm just thinking.
Part of the challenge, looking with the built environment, too, so we're having to figure out space within space to make it, make it work. You're right, sometimes you'd have it organized in a little bit different fashion and, and all, but with the space available and the property perimeters, you have to look at some modified design.
And do we have, like, a breakdown of the cost for, say, concessions, or, like, what, do we have a priority of what's next in line?
So we do have the breakdown. We didn't bring it to present tonight, but it's definitely part of the estimate, and it seems that, so we, we didn't prioritize it, but if there were, you know, an organization that had funding, or an investment group, or funding became available, then I think that would be, part of the decision process would be, what would get built next?
And that's the nice thing, nice thing about this, this approach, is this phased approach, since we can't build it all at once, like we originally wanted to, with the funding we have available, this is being built that you can add on over time, as either, as Jen said, other funding partners, private investment groups come in, or the city gets other funding sources. One of the challenges between concessions and restrooms, that I learned, is once you start adding those, it's going to also require some infrastructure improvements that could be quite expending as well. So that's a tipping point of jumping costs. And so it's hard to say, you know, add the concessions and the restrooms later, or vice versa, because it's going to require the same amount of infrastructure improvements that you're going to have to install in there as well, which is like water main, looping, and those type of things.
The other thing we found is that this set of additional restrooms goes with the additional seating beyond the 500. So there's some things, yeah, that would need to go together.
Troy?
Good evening, council. We redid the long-term financial model for the rack with the 2026 proposed budget, assuming the council is going to adopt that later next month. Not a whole lot of change. You could see we brought forward the same five scenarios that the council considered a few months ago. We really landed on that 15-year debt. It was kind of a right size for what we thought we could do in terms of our project versus the entire Phase Three, the 26 acres across the street. So as Councilmember Greenstein stated, it's about $12.5 million, a little bit, a little bit more than 12. Just for your information, the model from, you know, a few months ago, this is a slight decrease. It's about $350,000 lower than the previous model, but right about $12.5 million available for a project, 15-year debt, annual payment of about $1.2 million.
Okay, so what's the next step?
So we just wanted to see if you had any additional questions and comments, concerns? If not, we'll move on, keep on moving to the 60%.
So to maintain our, our schedule and timeframe and time to issue bonds by the end of 2026, beginning in 2027, in order to meet the PFD extension deadline, you know, again, want to make sure council knows where we are in this design process, and how it's, how it's starting to formulate, and we are prepared to go forward with 3% on to the next step.
Proceed.
Yeah, I think, you know, we really don't have a choice. Have to negotiate, or we're going to run out of time and not have the ability to get that PDF funding, so.
I mean, it, it's sort of heartbreaking, because I, when we got the extension, I'm thinking, oh my goodness, there's so much we're going to be able to do with this next, you know, it's like-
Till we saw the price tag.
Well, yeah, you know, and it's just like, well, jeez, we were able to build this whole complex for, you know, the, the first extension, and here we are, and we get to add some lights and that. I mean, it's just like, oh my goodness, it's like, everything is so much more expensive today, and it's, it's really heartbreaking. But I don't want to give, like, we're going to do all of this, and we're still not quite to the point where we can even attract a, a pro team yet, because they were going to require the locker rooms and the additional seating and the press box, and, you know, like, this gets us on our way, but we're still not there. And so, you know, I'm just, like, curious of, I guess, I'm, I'm a little bit interested in learning a little bit more on the second PFD and sales tax, right? And what are the rules behind that? Where, where do we get to set the boundaries? Is it, like, what, what that, I'm just trying to think, like, long-term, because this doesn't get us where I think we need to be, to be, continue to be a competitive regional athletic complex. Like, it gets us a step in the right direction, but it doesn't get us all the way there. And so we have to be thinking long-term strategically. We know, you know, it's like, we're at square one with Metropolitan Parks District. District. From everything, everyone I've talked to, they're like, why don't you do a sales tax? Sales tax, you know, they don't feel the effects of a sales tax. And I feel like we're sales taxing ourselves to death, but it seems to be considerably more open way of public support, because everyone thinks, well, someone else is paying for it, I'm not paying, you know. Everyone's paying for it when they come in and visit. And there's some, you know, truth to that, but, you know, maybe the second PFD, is it in perpetuity? Is it, is there, you know, 10-year, is, you know, I'm just curious if that's something that we needed to be thinking long-term.
I don't believe you can do the second PFD on the same, the original project. I do know the second one is in perpetuity, yes.
But if you do the boundaries, it can be within the same boundaries, right?
Well, you have to have the existing PFD to qualify to run a second PFD. And I know there's, and there's some more conversations to be had in there regionally too, because I think there's some interest in.
I know.
The other cities of doing something as well. And they're looking at, you know, again, it kind of reminds me of the conversations that were occurring back in the early 2000s for establishing this PFD. So that opportunity is open. It's, we don't know exactly where it's going to go or details yet, but this is something we can definitely consider and look at as a potential option.
If Olympia and Tumwater want to draw boundaries around Olympia and Tumwater for their PFD, and if we want to put ours around us in our urban growth area for ours, is that a possibility, or?
That could be something we can explore and talk about, yes. And then also too, again, I agree, this is going into this, we thought, you know, with this opportunity, we'd be able to do something with the additional property, the phase three property, and we found out the cost difference. But I do also want to add, while this doesn't get us to the full stadium of a sports team, it does get us on our way, and it also converts another field from grass to turf that gives us more capacity, both for not only local teams, but also teams coming from all around the state to play at this facility. So it does give us more capacity and opportunity to attract other activities that are, they're definitely demonstrating demand.
So we're going to get to, next phase is 60%. Is our, is our goal to get to the 12, 4, 9, 3, 7, 4, right? So we're going to go along, that's why I was wondering, like, what's next in line?
We're looking at, we're recommending going out for a 15-year bond. As you can see in that, if you go 20, 30, you don't get that much more. And then at 15 years, we have the opportunity to maybe reconsider some additional refunding, to do some other replacement improvements or other things that may be in our lifecycle. I think Councilman Dunning has his hand up.
Okay. Councilmember Dunning?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of go over that, the difference between that 15 and that 20-year. It's only about a $20,000 difference over the course of that timeframe, and you're looking at $180,000 less per year on the annual debt payment. And obviously, money gets cheaper over time. And I'm just, at least the consideration of, you know, would that $180,000 difference of savings per year be better to offset maintenance costs? I mean, it's a pretty close, pretty close amount to at least not have that conversation compared to the rest of the scenarios. So I'm hoping that made sense. But I don't, you know, I don't remember seeing the numbers that close before. And just seeing as if there is that $180,000 savings on the annual debt payment, that money could potentially be used for other fittings associated with the rack. So I just wanted to throw that out there for consideration.
Do you understand?
I think so. So I, I'm going to answer, I'm not going to answer your question, but I think I'm going to get to the answer that you want. So the 1.2 million in the 15-year scenario, that 1.2 million is the amount that's available for debt throughout that 15-year period. So we're going to grow, I mean, the revenues are going to grow over that time. At the same time, the cost to operate the rack is going to increase. So what I'm saying is the, in the earlier years of that debt period, we're going to have some cash flow that we can use for different projects. We could use them for, you know, facility repair. I know that we have, you know, a number of facilities out there that are going to need to replace, like, you know, the benches, the trash facilities, you know, the picnic shelters are going to need some work. So in other words, in the, you know, the early years of the 15-year term, we're going to have more than 1.2 million coming in and available for those types of things. But this, we took the approach that we wanted to make sure and guarantee that we had adequate monies for that debt payment throughout the 15-year period.
15 years is the, is the time horizon for the PFD, right? That's how long?
It's 30 years, but.
30.
So we'll have to issue debt again regardless at the end of this 15-year term, because one of the requirements to maintain that sales tax credit is to have outstanding debt on the original projects.
And that also puts us in a flexible position that if we have to have some substantial facility replacement, because there's lifecycle issues as we get further, the facility ages, or if there's an opportunity for the phase three property and some private investment partnership, it gives, just gives some opportunity and flexibility instead of being locked into a longer-term debt payment.
So we have the opportunity to do a 30-year extension for the full 49, but you recommend doing 15 and then coming back another 15 years to figure out the other?
Right. So in the, well, I was straight to here in a 30-year, that 30-year that's included here, that is 100% of the PFD sales tax that we're projecting to come to Lacey in year, well, that would be year 55 technically, but year 30 of the 30-year extension. So we're going to grow into that 3.2, so we only have 1.9 that we're receiving annually right now. So that column there is really just to illustrate, we couldn't, even if we dedicated the entire amount of the sales tax at year 30 or 55, however you look at that, you still couldn't have enough to, you know, pay for the original rack phase three concept. So it's just an illustration, it just doesn't buy us a lot in terms of debt and that upfront capital. Because even getting to, you know, all the alternative bids with the current, it's, it's pretty, it's going to be pretty close in that scenario. But yes, you could issue 30-year debt. In fact, Olympia just issued 30-year debt, which, you know, gives you more capital to work with, but you pay a lot more interest. In fact, maybe a different way to respond to Councilmember Dunning's question about 15 versus 20, in terms of the amount of principal you get in that five-year timeframe, you'll pay more in interest over that same extra five years. It's just, you know, the compounding effect of interest. So you actually end up paying back more than you would actually gain in terms of principal in that five-year period.
But again, this isn't, we're not paying the, it's coming from the state's share.
But the amount we get isn't enough to cover if we did the 49 million, because we're only receiving, what'd you say, 1.9?
1.9 currently, yeah.
I mean, it doesn't even, we're a million and three short in making the debt payment, so we couldn't, that would be, that wouldn't be a fiscally sound decision.
Okay.
Total payments amount to 96.
Yeah.
That was the scenario we ran when looking at the, back in June, looking at if we reached out what our total growth in PFD sales by the year 30 would look like and the payment, what that would get us. And if this is, like Troy said, illustrating that even if we maximize and had general fund dollars we can add to that, we still couldn't hit that 45 to 60 million, or 50 to 60 million dollar price tag. I heard, Councilwoman Durning, I think I heard from everybody in the room, that, you know, go forward with, you know, the phase three process. We could still talk about some of the findings, if we get more information if we get closer on what the debt financing field looks like. And, yeah, we'll have some more checking as we get to 60.
So when do we think we'll see 60? And then when do you think we'll actually, because we need to go out to bid, we need to figure out everything, right? And like, how far are you going to bid out? Like?
So we're still working on the 30% to get wrapped up at the end of this year. And so 60% that, and is still being nailed down in terms of when we expect that to come in. But we're trying to finish the construction documents by the end of '26 to build ready, to get ready to bid it at the beginning of '27. So that's, that's still a year out, so subject to some change, but that's where we're at.
So we're a little ways out before we even get into a bidding environment to see where everything's going to come in at and how much we can add. We're, all can happen between now and then, that's for sure.
And what's the deadline to go out for these bonds?
We're scheduled to issue the bonds, well.
Well, we always have to have outstanding debt, so the last payment for the current debt is then at 2027. So we'd have to start that debt process, you know, early 2027 in order to maintain that.
So, yeah, we'll go out to bids and then figure it out, and then issue the debt to start on it.
That's a pretty short time horizon.
It is.
27 is, I mean, we're in 26, like, you know, four weeks.
Yeah.
And I will say, there's a lot of really excited stakeholders, soccer, lacrosse, football, ultimate frisbee. I know it's not the big, the big items, but there's a lot of.
Serves a lot of.
It'll serve a lot of people.
Absolutely. And we're, and we're well on our way to, you know, hopefully get to a point where we even take the next step. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last agenda item, which is our comprehensive plan update. We're getting really close to updating our full comprehensive plan.
It's like the CED invasion. Can you get my chair? Does that keep on looking up? There's more of you coming in.
Coming in the door.
There you go.
And for the record, I just wanted to recognize Chair Gadmans here from our Planning Commission. Thank you for being here tonight.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Mayor. Good evening, Vanessa Dolby, the Community Economic Development Director here at the City of Lacey. And tonight, we are here to present the final stages of the comprehensive plan as recommended by the Planning Commission. Our presentation this evening will bring before you the culmination of two years of effort to develop, refine, and finalize the city's new 20-year plan that strives to articulate the community's vision through a series of goals and policies that will guide the day-to-day decision-making of elected officials and local government staff. This plan establishes the roadmap for policy direction guiding the city into the future. So when we began this process, if you can go back in your brain two years ago, internally, we had five primary goals to achieve with this effort. One was to ensure that the comprehensive plan was readable and usable, didn't just sit on a shelf. Second was that it reflected the vision of our community. Third, that it was integrated and relatable between the elements within the plan. Fourth, that it was a streamlined plan that streamlined our goals, policies, and our development standards. And then fifth, that it met the GMA requirements and laws. And I believe that the plan we have before you tonight does accomplish all five of these goals.
I don't know, but neither.
In addition to that, there was a ton of changes at the legislative level that have been embedded into this plan in the background and some of our technical appendices. These things include such changes as our climate element, looking at climate resiliency as well as greenhouse gas emissions, a multimodal level of service, which is the first of its kind, looking at transportation, oh, sorry, I just got a message from Aubrey. She was supposed to be here, but we're good. She's not here, we'll cover it for him. Looking at transportation from lens beyond just vehicles, looking at bicycles and pedestrians. And then also considering housing displacement analysis and looking at displacement that our goals and policies may have in the past or in the future on housing, and ensuring that we can accommodate housing that is planned for the future that includes all income segments of our population. So lots and lots of new requirements that are embedded into the background of this document. And then finally, and before you this evening, is a first of its kind for Lacey, which is advancing a plan on a digital platform. And we are excited to show you some sneak peek to that this evening. And this digital platform will allow the community or the readers to be able to filter through the plan based on their own personal priorities and, and goals or elements that they want to look at. And then before I move on to staff, because as you mentioned, Mayor, our esteemed Planning Commission Chair Jeff Gadman is here, I want to give him a chance to speak. And I could have a lot of real big thank yous this evening. I'll save those for another evening, but at the end of the day, the amount of time our Planning Commission has put into this recommendation is significant. It was a big lift, and we really, really appreciate all their effort. The attachment, I think we put in the last meeting, was almost 300 pages long for this plan, and they looked through every single one of those, and we really appreciate that. With that, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Jeff Gadman, Chair of the Planning Commission. First thing I want to do is express my appreciation for each of you council members allowing me to be a part of such an exciting commission. But I really want to thank my fellow commission members. There are a few that are no longer on the commission that had significant role in this document and the current planning commissioners. And I just want to say, every single one of them exhibits every meeting, their dedication to the residents of this city. And it just reinforces my impression that there's, or Lacey is the best city in Thurston County. I really appreciate Vanessa and Ryan and staff, because, you know, I'm a little bit of an expert in land use, but not all of my fellow commission members are. And there's a lot of esoteric elements, as you all know, with land use. And Vanessa and Ryan and staff really presented things in a way that were easy enough to understand that we could say, okay, yeah, we get this. I also want to express my appreciation to the residents that showed up at open houses and at various city events where we had booths and at public hearings, because those comments hit directly, you know. That's hearing from the people that are affected by the results of what we're deciding. And I just want to say in closing that I am really proud of what we're presenting to you right now. It is, as Vanessa said, two years of a lot of effort from a lot of people. And I think what we put together is incredible. So thank you all.
Thank you for your work. We know, we know our planning commission is, you know, does all of our deep dives on this stuff, and we couldn't, we couldn't, you know, be here today if it wasn't for all your hard work. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right.
I think that's my cue. I have three different remotes here, so we'll find out which one works. But hello, everyone. I'm Han Shepherd. I'm a senior long-range planner here, and I'm going to be running through the first portion of these slides. It's largely a high-level overview of everything that we've done in the last two years. We will go into a little bit of detail on a couple of different subjects, but quite a few of these slides have references to your packet as far as what attachment we're talking about. And that really is kind of the big bundled-up version of all the content and kind of everything behind everything that we're talking about tonight. So with that, I'll try remote number one. All right, yeah. And it has battery, it vibrated on me too. That was interesting. All right, so just a little bit of background and kind of an update on the actual process itself. Comprehensive plan is required to be updated every 10 years. It was last updated in 2016, so this will be our 2025 version of the comprehensive plan. It's really, its intent is to be the roadmap for where we want to go in the next 20 years. So it's that kind of visionary, high-level document that really identifies as a community what our priorities are, what are we working towards, what's our vision for the future. It contains a range of different plan elements, some of which are actually new for this year's, or for this update, I should say. So greenhouse gas emission, greenhouse gas reductions and resiliency are actually two new planning elements that were not previously required in historic updates. And then we also did put asterisks next to three other elements, which we're actually not touching as part of this, or this update, because they were updated previously. So they're being updated and rolled into this, but we're not actually doing a deep dive on those specific elements. So this graphic is one that we've rolled out to you guys in the past. It was developed early on in the process through our communications and community engagement plan, which is attachment one. And it really broke out this update process into four phases. The early phase, starting really in summer, fall of 2024, is really that visioning, high-level, expansive, open-ended, question-style approach, really kind of gathering as much feedback from the. question-style approach, really kind of gathering as much feedback from the community as possible on really what their goals are for the future. And then from there, shifting into community priorities is really where we're taking all that open-ended feedback and trying to distill it down into actionable statements and kind of goals for the future. And then from there, we developed a draft plan where we took all that information and then represented it back to the community. And that was really kind of a confirmation process, making sure that what we were hearing, what we were documenting, what we were presenting back to them was reflective of the feedback that they had originally given us. And then that brings us to the final plan, which is really where we're at today. So what we're going to be running through tonight is a lot of the content that's gone through the entirety of that process and led us to the phase that we're in now. And I will call out these little orange dots here really kind of represent an intentional effort to create pathways for the community to participate at every single phase along the way. So, yeah. This is a graphic. It's also represented in your staff report, but each one of these teal dots now represents a unique touch point or time that we actually took this update process or different components of it to city council for feedback, for guidance, starting all the way in February 27th, 2024, which is that visioning exercise that we did with you guys, that asked you a range of questions on how we should engage with the community, what kind of questions we should ask, what are our high-level priorities. And then moving all the way forward to the orange dot is actually where we're at today. So it's more intended as a visual graphic. There's very small text on there I'm not going to run through, but we do hit some of the high points later on in the presentation.
And I'll add, just anecdotally, my understanding is that, looking regionally at our other cities and our county, this comprehensive plan has come before this council in more touch points than any other jurisdiction within the county. So just sharing that also with you.
I can tell you, a couple of us, Andy and I at least, were on the council back last time this was done. And this is night and day different than it was then. We, I mean, it came before us, you know, maybe twice in the whole process.
That was also.
One of those was the end. Yeah, I'm sorry, Michael was on there at the time as well. But this was in a whole different experience, and I very much appreciate the approach this time.
Yeah, I was going to save that, that comment till a little bit later. There's, we had, we've been doing, we've been around here for such a long time. We'd seen, we'd seen this before, and this was definitely a, a different approach than last time. And I was, you know, I'll, I'll save my comments later on, what do you think was pros and cons between the, the two approaches. Obviously, we were a lot more involved in many ways. But it felt like the last process seemed like it was, took even longer. And I, I don't know, it just felt like a completely different, more, I don't know. It was, it was a different, it was a completely different process. And I was just, I'm curious, what do you think the pros and cons between the two processes were? So, but, well.
You want to talk about that?
Well, we can talk about that.
Commissioner Gadman was on the council then, weren't you?
Yes.
And I got to say, one of the things as a commission that we were committed to is getting these touch points done with the council, because it's so important. I remember, you know, like you said, kind of the dearth of information going through the process the last time. And it wasn't a complete lack of information, it just wasn't as many touch points. And so I do appreciate the council and your collaboration with the commission, because there were certain times when we would say to Ryan, okay, can you go ask them what their guidance would be at this point?
Yeah.
Because it really helped shape the final outcome.
Yeah. It definitely was more of a commission-driven last time than, you know, seems like compared to this time. But anyway, we'll, we'll, I'll let you go and keep going.
Yep. So as part of Phase One, we called Phase One visioning. And the public-facing portion of that really started in July of 2024. We connected quite a few times with planning commission and council in advance of that. But that's really kind of when we kicked off the public-facing portion of our community engagement and outreach. As part of that early outreach and engagement, we actually went to you guys and planning commission and asked what style of engagement we should do, how should we reach the community, what methods should we utilize, what tools are out there that we should utilize to really make sure that we're reaching a broad base of the Lacey community. And so we identified both in-person style pop-up events, and then also hosting events, and then also utilizing different communication channels that we have available to us at the city. But we attended events like the South Sound Barbecue Festival, Depot Night Markets, Lacey in Tune at Ottermar Park. We also went out to other, connected with different community groups, cop cars and kids, Thurston County Fair. And all of these were identified because they do tend to have a strong Lacey showing at them. So we thought that our, our level of effort versus the, the reach that we were going to get at these events was going to be the best. So, and we attended quite a few of these actually, both in 2024 and again in 2025 at different phases of the update process. We also used a range of different communication channels that we have internally, so just the city website, our social media platforms. We developed a comp plan-specific email list, so people could come along and actually identify themselves as somebody that wanted to be maintained in the loop. So anytime we did an update or had another upcoming event, anything like that, an email blast went out to kind of bring the community along as part of this process. And then we also utilized four different online engagement platforms at different stages throughout this update process. One was the Mentimeter that we already talked about. Another was a platform called Ment, or MapChurner, which is a GIS-based community survey platform. So it actually is map-based in the sense that the community can drop points within a map of Lacey and actually identify specific regions or areas or activities or concerns that they may have, and actually pinpoint where that's taking place within the city. So it eliminates a lot of the guesswork as staff when we're going through kind of open-ended feedback. And really, we can zero in on exactly what that comment is and respond to it more directly, which is a fantastic tool. And then we also used Conveyo, which I'll speak to a little bit later. And then we also launched Story Map, which is more of a visual representation of all the land use style stuff that I'll also touch on in a bit. But one of the things that we were paying very close attention to throughout the engagement process was who are we hearing from? We wanted to make sure that the feedback that we were receiving was consistent with Lacey demographics and really was reflective of the Lacey community. So we even actually updated our outreach and engagement strategies a little bit over time to make sure that we were really getting as close to Lacey demographic response rates and feedback as possible. One example of this is actually about midway through, we were noticing that our renter population versus our homeowner population was proportionally kind of underrepresented based on how many renters we do have within Lacey. So then we started doing more targeted outreach to those communities and actually noticed that there was an uptick in the feedback that we've had received from those populations moving forward. But yeah, high-level takeaways here, we are generally within a few percentage points of Lacey demographics as far as the, what we heard and what we, who we heard from. And as a kind of to-date, I should say, we're right around that 60,000 mark as far as community contacts throughout this process. So all in all, that feels pretty good. This map over here shows a heat map of where responses came from, and it really is consistent with our population centers throughout the community. So another way to really kind of confirm that as we're moving along, that we are really doing, succeeding at reaching a broad base of the community. So, moving into Phase Two, community priorities. So as part of the MapChurner outreach that we did, we asked two open-ended questions pretty early in this process. The first one being, when thinking about the future of our city, what do you want it to look like? So that was kind of that forward-thinking, visionary question. And then we also followed it up with a quality of life question. So in what ways can the City of Lacey support and improve upon our community's quality of life? And we intentionally left those as open-end questions, so people could really kind of take that in any direction that they wanted, provide any feedback in response to those questions that felt relevant or important to them and their experience living in Lacey or interacting with Lacey, I should say. And from all of the feedback that we got from those two questions, we identified really six common themes that we heard from those responses. And we actually organized them based on frequency of when that theme showed up within the feedback that we got back. So the top one being transportation, infrastructure, and network connectivity. And really, when you boiled it down on that, it had a lot to do with walkability and access. Second one was public health, safety, and social services. Third one was affordable housing and urban development. Fourth was sustainable and environmental conservation. Fifth, community identity, amenities, and recreation. And then sixth was economic growth and local businesses. So taking all of that feedback, we created six guiding community goals that we used to really kind of inform the planning process, inform the development of our goals and policies, inform the drafting of our comprehensive plan language, and really made sure that those were strongly represented and featured throughout the process moving forward. But these, yeah, they're slightly renamed, but really just kind of still alignment with those common themes that we heard from that early feedback. And then we rolled that back out to the community at different points throughout the process as that kind of more of that confirmation that, are we hearing you correctly? Are we still on the right track? And we got positive feedback from that throughout. Shifting gears a little bit, we did also, so in tandem with all of the community outreach and engagement, we also were taking a look at our zoning map and our future land use map. Currently, as it stands today, our zoning map and our future land use map are one and the same. So anytime you want to update one, you have to update the other. And one of the directives that we got from you guys early on is that it would be good to separate those two out, so that we can have a standalone future land use map that is really more of that visionary document, really a visual representation of what the comprehensive plan is supposed to be. And then the zoning map, which is more of that on-the-ground, day-to-day operational, what can you build on your property, what are the standards and setbacks for that. So one of the outcomes of this update is that we're decoupling those. So they still strongly relate to each other, but they are separate maps at this point. So that's a, going to be a positive tool, both on our side as, as implementers of the code, but then how we communicate with the community as well. So the future land use map being a new map as part of this update, it's really a simplification of our zoning map in a lot of ways. It's divided into six different designations, and they range from things like open space institutional and residential through commercial, mixed use, and all the way into more higher intensity uses like commercial and light industrial. And we do have shortened kind of summary definitions of what each one of those is there, but we also have that in Attachment 15, if you want to look at their full definitions. And then moving into Phase Three, which is really where we're getting into the, the language, the writing, the drafting of the actual plan based on all of the feedback, all of the information that we've collected, all the analysis that we've done, all of the different supporting documents and reports. It's really where the rubber really meets the road here. But we started developing goals and policies for the 2025 update, and this is largely based on community feedback, what we heard from planning commission, what we heard from council, what was in the 2016 goals and policy of the comprehensive plan, taking all of those different inputs and refining them to reflect the 2025 vision that we've been hearing from the community and looking forward where we want to be. We took all of those draft goals and policies and rolled that back out to the community using Conveyo platform, which is intended to be a discussion-based kind of forum online where people can provide comments, but then also see what their, other community members are also providing comments on, and then actually have a discussion back and forth. So it is more intended to be an open dialogue platform there, which is something that we thought was pretty successful, because it also saved us the time of not having to review the same comment or feedback over and over again. It gave people the opportunity to kind of thumbs up or thumbs down certain comments. So when something was stated and echoed the way that they wanted it to, they could lend their support to that statement. So it was a helpful tool in that sense. But yeah, based on the rollout of that draft, we got quite a few different comments back. Let's see, yep, here we go. And we actually, this is one of the times that we came back to you guys and presented a lot of the feedback that we had heard, where, what types of topics that feedback was addressing, speaking to. We received a lot of statements of support. We saw a lot of goals and policies generally in alignment with some recommendations for some tweaks here and there, but generally the intent captured what the community was asking for. There are a range of comments that fell kind of outside the purview of the comprehensive plan. Maybe they're just very specific to their comment than when the comprehensive plan itself is more of a high-level document. So the comprehensive plan addressed those to the degree possible. And then some of the comments were really just kind of addressed in other documents or planning resources that we have available. But in total, we had 37 changes based on that round of community review that we rolled into the goals and policies as they're drafted. And then that's also published now through Attachment 19 in your packet, but also online on our website that we'll get to in a little bit. Running on another tandem to all this work, we also took a look at Chapter 16 updates. And Chapter 16 is our zoning code. So we wanted to make sure that when we roll out our future land use map, when we roll out all these goals and policies, that our zoning criteria is consistent with these priorities to the degree possible through this effort. It's not to say that it's perfectly in alignment, but there were some opportunities that we identified where we could advance both at the same time. One of the early comments that we heard from council is that we have quite a few different zoning designations. And it would be great to identify opportunities to consolidate zones where possible. So where there's a lot of overlap, maybe where the zone didn't quite build out the way that initially anticipated. So taking a look at where those areas are, that we might be able to consolidate different, but similar zoning designations into one that would help us as implementers, but also help the community as far as understanding what the zoning code is, kind of ease of access and responsiveness. We also went out to the community as part of this process and asked for rezone requests. So we had a platform available, MapChurner, where people could actually drop pins, identify the property, the address, current zoning, what they'd like it to be, and provide kind of a description of why that zoning request was being made. It's a much more streamlined approach than what we normally do as far as the zoning process request or rezone request goes. Normally, that's applicant-driven. As part of the comprehensive plan process, that was city-driven. So there was an opportunity for a lot more comments, or a lot more requests to come in. In total, we had around 52 of those. Normally, on a year-to-year basis, we have one to three. So that was a significant uptick from what we're used to, but also comes with a lot more work, but we'll get into that in a second. And then we also did minor text amendments, so situations where the zone itself was remaining the same, but maybe there was some language that we could adjust a little bit to be more in alignment with what we were hearing from the community, looking forward what our goals are for those districts, and trying to find ways that can better align with those future goals. But yeah, for zoning consolidations, this is also again in Attachment 17 that points to the Story Map, which is more of a visual representation of these locations. But these are all the zones in our current zoning chapter today that we identified for consolidation or removal, because they had strong overlap with other zoning designations or no longer necessarily fit the goal or purpose that they had initially been created to accomplish. And a good example of this might be the mineral, mineral extraction district, where we had one remaining sliver that was still in the city, but for all intents and purposes, didn't really fulfill that role anymore. So it was more of like a cleanup process. And then we also, so yeah, I touched on this a little bit earlier, but we had 52 community rezone requests of those. We went through a pretty intensive review process with the planning commission on what we felt we could carry forward as part of the comprehensive plan process. At the same time, we identified nine total locations or areas that really aligned with the goals of the comprehensive plan, what we're hearing from the community, and felt like pretty reasonable lifts as far as the amount of effort that it would take to bring those along as part of the comprehensive plan. It's not to say that there aren't other great opportunities out there, it just felt like those other ones that weren't carried forward as part of this process might deserve some additional attention and more focused review, which we weren't able to provide as part of the comprehensive plan update. And then, yeah, so we touched on this as well, but minor text amendments. So this is really just adjusting other still existing and continuing to exist in the future zoning designations that might just need a couple word tweaks or language adjustments to better align with what we've been hearing from the community, and also to align with Title 16, or Title 11 updates that you guys have also been briefed on. And I think, are we, where are we at on that one?
That was Shannon's item. That's the process improvements, moving Chapter One out of the Public Works Standards into Title 11 of the Lacey Municipal Code.
Yep. So making sure that what we're doing in Title 16 is consistent with those ongoing parallel efforts as well. And then the website, this is where I'm going to test our technology here and see if I can actually jump into it. And I'm going to start sharing from my computer, so we'll see if that works. Bear with me here for a second. Bear with me here for a second. Whoa. Yeah. I did not work any sound effects into this, but...
In a complane, far, far away.
Let's see if I can do this.
Can you reshare?
Yeah. You're a tempest. Oh, yeah. You're old.
Hey, he's not as old as me.
Okay, so this is our draft comprehensive plan website. It's, alright, yeah, so the intent here is that it's going to be a much more simplified version of a comprehensive plan document. And Vanessa ran through some of our priorities early on as far as what we wanted to get out of the comprehensive plan update, but a big one was kind of usability, really kind of deconstructing a comprehensive plan into its most simple form and really giving, providing an avenue for people to interact with, read about, and learn about the comprehensive plan in a very streamlined fashion, so you don't have to wade through what some might call a very dense document to get to the area or section that you're particularly interested in. So this is the result of that. I will say, we do, let's see if my mouse here allows me to move around on this. I will say, we did also create a PDF version of the comprehensive plan for those that still want to be able to print something out and hold it in their hand. That is available down at the bottom. So that still does exist today, but our goal is that most folks are probably engaging with our comprehensive plan with a particular interest in mind, and we wanted to create a simplified pathway for that to take place. So this is the landing screen here. There's some history, there's kind of talking about history profile. We have community priorities that we touched on a little bit earlier, but it provides information on what those are. It also provides community engagement background, so how we got to those community priorities, so you can learn and read about those. There's the plan elements, which is your chapters, so your land use, your housing, your transportation, things like that that live here. And then you can actually click into those, and then you get that breakdown that actually goes into a little bit more depth on each one of those plans. So it talks about kind of the background, its role within the city, its relevance, why it's important, how it plays with the other plans, information like that. But the big tool here that we were particularly excited about was the creation of this policy database, and you can access it in a range of different ways on the website. But what it is, is really a searchable inventory of all the different goals and policies associated with the comprehensive plan that's sortable by both chapter, so land use, housing, transportation, but then also community priority. So connected communities, blanking on what the rest of them are. But if I jump into it, let's see here, yeah, so you can filter by community priorities. So if you wanted to, for example, learn about goals or policies that relate to economic development and environmental preservation, you can actually toggle both of those on, and then it will actually give you all of our goals or policies that relate to both of those areas of interest. So for example, the top one that comes up here, we have 115 total goals or policies that qualifier would relate to economic development and environmental preservation. But then you can actually click on these, and they'll expand like accordion, so it'll, the top one here is promote socially and environmentally sustainable business and development. So that goal lives within economic development, but then also underneath that, it also identifies all the different community priorities that it also relates to, and then other related chapters. So this is something that would also relate to our greenhouse gas emission goals, our resiliency goals, our transportation goals, and our land use goals. So that's one way that you can use this tool. Alternatively, there's a reset here. So say that you're interested in finding out about trees, or something like that. You can type that in, and then it'll actually give you a list of all goals or policies that relate to trees, or whatever your given subject of interest is. So it's a much more efficient way of getting to the component of the comprehensive plan that you're specifically interested in. So it's something that we're pretty all excited about, and...
That's really awesome.
Yeah, still a work in progress, but to my knowledge, it's actually, we're one of the first communities to roll something like this out for a comprehensive plan, so.
That's just so much more user-friendly, so much more accessible to the community than that big, thick paper document that, you know, just nobody can go, no one in the public, generally, and very few people in the public are going to read through that to find what they're looking for. This just makes it so much more usable, it's amazing.
Or even worse, an online PDF where you have to scroll through and try to find the page you're looking for.
Yeah, if you want to, it's there. I mean, if that's, you know, how you prefer to look at things, you can do it, you can go that route, so, very cool.
And from there, I'm actually going to hand it off to Ryan. Yep, oh, man, there we go.
Yeah, we're good. Thanks, Hans. So I'm going to bring us home tonight, talk about the Planning Commission public hearing, the feedback that was received as part of the public hearing, the results of the changes that the Planning Commission made as a result of the public hearing, and then our next steps, which are relatively few because we're here towards the end of the process. There we go.
Do you just, are you advancing it, or am I donating?
If you click, I can announce it. I wasn't going to tell you, since you're asking.
Yeah, that's usually how these things work, isn't it? So Planning Commission held public hearing back on October 8th, and the feedback is in your packets as Attachment 13, so the whole Planning Commission record is attached for you to review tonight. I'll go over just briefly here some of the topics that were discussed and identified. First of all, there was a number of just targeted statements of support around many of the rezone applications from the proponents of those applications. We also received a comment about the use of our language, especially related to climate and resiliency. This is related to how some of our language in our comprehensive plan was more supportive than what was currently in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, which was more kind of mandating. And if you'll remember, this is one of those council touchpoints. We actually came to council and asked, kind of, what is your preference in terms of the language related to some of these policies? Would you like to be more kind of broad and supporting of, you know, supportive language? Or would you like more mandating language? And we heard from the council that we want to keep broad, we want to keep our options open. And so when it came to the Planning Commission public hearing, we actually got feedback that people were actually concerned with the broad level of language and actually wanted more prescriptive language. We received a number of comments, especially from neighboring property owners, on the 5,000 Mullen Road property. This is, the lot property was proposed for rezoned from open space institutional to a residential designation. I've got another slide on some changes from the Planning Commission recommendation on this one. The next one was use of roundabouts. We had somebody come that was concerned just generally about roundabouts. I think he gave similar feedback to the council as well on that topic. More prioritization of housing and infill development. This was comments specifically from the Olympia Master Builders. Some concerns or support and concerns about the Title 16 zoning language updates, and then a comment around our future land use map, specifically requesting that industrial uses be contained within mixed-use districts. That's something that the Planning Commission did not actually go forward with, so we do have those districts as proposed in the future land use map that's in your packet. We did include as part of your packet as well, our staff analysis and review, so we actually went through each comment and provided staff analysis, and that's in your packet as well. So the Planning Commission, at the meeting on October 22nd, did make a unanimous recommendation to council to consider adoption of the 2025 comprehensive plan with a couple of additional modifications. And first was related to the Mullen Road property, the lot property that is in process as far as the transfer and development to the housing authority. So the staff, originally, our proposal was to change that from an open space institutional designation to a moderate-density residential designation. That was, the moderate-density designation was not necessarily consistent with the surrounding area, which was already zoned low-density residential. We wanted that moderate-density residential to more closely align with the housing authority's future development of that property. However, we're proposing, or the Planning Commission's recommendation, is a low-density residential designation. It is a five-acre piece of property, which allows at low-density residential, six units to the acre. Standard residential development, that's 30 units to the acre, and so that's why we actually wanted to recommend a moderate density, to get to that higher level. The housing authority is seeking a development of about 60 units. In that, talking to the housing authority, they're actually going to do a cottage development using our cottage development standards in our regulations, which actually, if you do that, it actually doubles your density. So they go from a six-unit per acre to a 12-unit per acre development concept using our cottage ordinance under the standard residential, low-density residential zone. So while they're, if they did a standard single-family subdivision, they would only be allowed 30 lots or 30 units using the cottage housing portion of our code, they are actually able to double that to get up to 60.
That's the one with a three-foot setback in the rear?
No, the cottage housing development is basically, I think a similar cottage housing development is down off 37th, off College Street, the Habitat for Humanity project, where you have, actually have the houses around kind of little open-space courtyards.
Is that our only example?
That is, I think, our current, there's some older examples. There's the cottages off Rattle Road, which is kind of like a, maybe a 1960s or 70s era version of that.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's our most recent example.
But Ryan, this change won't negatively impact what they, the number of cottages they wanted to build?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, one thing, so the other one was some Title 16 zoning language updates around our Hawks Prairie Business District. That's in Chapter 16.37. So we are, the Planning Commission's recommendation is to consolidate Hawks Prairie Business District into one zone. Currently, it is two kind of different subzones. In doing that, it, we needed to kind of address how warehousing was used in conjunction with other facilities. So if you think of warehousing, it's allowed as a, kind of an accessory or a supplemental use associated with the main use. We recommended, our staff actually recommended removing a conditional use permit requirement. We got feedback from a developer who's looking to do a project and actually wanted to have that conditional use permit language actually left in. Staff's belief is that it actually makes it easier if they were able to, easier for development if we leave that conditional use permit language out. That's existing language they would like to have back in. And so Planning Commission's recommendation is to leave the conditional use permit language around warehousing and Hawks Prairie Business District the same as it currently is today.
Can you, can you explain, so if removing it actually makes it easier for them to do it, why is it that they want the language to stay in there? Do you have any idea?
I don't know.
So, I mean, I'll attempt to address it. This individual did come and talk during a couple of council meetings on our Chapter 11 amendments as well, so this is included in that request. It's just addressed in a couple of different work program items that we're working on. And I believe, if I can represent them here, that their reason for that is to have the words explicitly within the code. And from a developer perspective, that explicit, explicitity in the code, I think, makes them feel more comfortable with it, and that is why they asked for it, if I'm going to put words in their mouth.
But can't we just explicitly put it in the, can't we solve that problem?
Well, we have proposed to put it back in. That is what the Planning Commission recommendation includes. So it addresses their concerns with the proposal, with the recommendation in front of you.
And gets us to the same place.
Yep, exactly.
But didn't they recommend us putting it back as a conditional use, but...
That was the original language in the code that they asked for back, so we just replaced it back in as it exists today.
But what I'm saying is, can't we get around their concerns, but...
Are you asking about seven issues to specifically list that particular use as permitted?
Yeah. Don't you solve that problem by just doing that?
We could make that change. That would make it allowed outright, which is not how it currently exists today. Currently today, we have the opportunity to review that through a land use permit process, and it is in our business districts, not an industrial zone, and that's why we have the conditional use permit in there.
And if I can maybe add in, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this is talking about the Hawks Prairie Business District, which has a different vision than your light industrial, commercial, and light industrial, so allowed warehouses as an accessory use. And that, that's the question. So if you allow it outright, then it applies, you know, on more than just, it has a little bit broader implications than, you know, either having it as a conditional use permit, so it can be a site-specific review and deal with the issues specifically, or, you know, having language, just getting put in words in their mouth, there's not explicitly said, then somebody could also, down the road, have a different interpretation of what's allowed and what's not allowed. So they, they would prefer to keep the status quo and not...
Well, so, then they're correct by not specifically having it stated as a conditional use, right, by...
I think that's the difference of opinion, because the interpretation is it would be allowed, but they just want to have it specifically stated, yeah.
Well, like I'm saying, but if it's allowed, you then just specifically say it's allowed.
So the benefit of having the conditional use is it does give us an opportunity to look at things like traffic patterns, particularly with trucks, emissions, noise, parking, those types of things. And this zone itself is located near a lot of residential, and so being able to take a little extra moment of scrutiny to review a large warehouse development, I would say, is a good idea, and that's what the code is that's before you all today. If we removed that section, then they would just come in with a permit and we'd issue it, and there would be no opportunity for that additional level of review and community notice.
So here's our last slide. One of the things I did want to mention is that these things are still, some of them a work in progress, and one of those things is our transportation element. We still are, so when we send our comprehensive plan to the state of Washington, they actually have to review, they take 60 days to review our comprehensive plan. We're still in that 60-day window. I think it ends December 1st. And so some of these things have had some changes that have come in, I'll say relatively last minute, that we've had to address between the Planning Commission's recommended version of, in this case, the transportation element, and then, you know, what's in your packet tonight and/or what you will see for approval. So for transparency purposes, we want to highlight what some of those things are, especially in our transportation element. We did have some recommended comments and changes, so as I mentioned, we're in that 60-day window, so the Washington State Department of Commerce has provided some guidance that we've needed to address as well. We are, we had been required to go through a certification process. This is a new process for this update through TRPC for certifying our transportation element. So we, they provided some comments that we needed to address in order to get that certification. We've also been updating the project list and some of the funding assessments associated with those projects. Those aren't necessarily new projects, they're more kind of paring down those essential projects and then pulling in projects from other documents, like our pedestrian bicycle plan. We did have updated some revised policies. The first one there, which hits four different policies, was updated language to be more inclusive of the users using the transportation system. That was based on some of that commerce feedback. The second bolt there, Policy T1B, is adjusting the language to reflect the city's efforts to provide low-stress bike routes within a half-mile of a higher-stress facility. This is already a current City of Lacey practice. If you think about this intangible, kind of practical terms, this is like, consider College Street a high-stress environment, and you're providing like either the Judd Street bike route or the Shealess Western Trail as a low-stress alternative. And then Policy T4B, which is adding a benchmark for vehicle miles traveled targets. And so previously, in the version that went through the Planning Commission, we did not have any kind of targets or dates to meet those targets. We're, been required now by the state to provide actual vehicle mile travel reduction targets based on future years and make sure that we keep that updated over time. We're also looking at some revisions to technical appendices, things like our functional classification map, which sets out what are the corridors in the community and how are they arranged kind of hierarchically by arterial collector, local streets, those kinds of things. Looking at our bicycle level of service, our approach there, looking at how we measure and operate traffic operations, and then also removing some discussion that was in the plan around Marvin Road, which was located in the urban growth area. There's been some change of circumstances in working with the county there, so. Yeah, so those are the things that have changed since the Planning Commission's recommendation. So the next thing, if you want to hit the next slide. We are here tonight at work session on November 25th. We are here tonight at work session on, on November twenty-fifth. Next steps is we got to finish our comprehensive plan website. As I mentioned, that December first is the, the deadline, the end date for the Department of Commerce for our, our state review of our comprehensive plan. So we've got a lot of work to do between now and ultimately December sixteenth. Within this, we'll be back in front of you with a, an action item at a regular council meeting. This will be an ordinance that will formalize adoption of this at your December sixteenth meeting, and then your final submitted, our final submitted to Commerce. So we have to package this all up and send it to the state of Washington, because there is an appeal period associated with adoption of our comp plan. And any appeals of it go through the Growth Management Hearings Board. So we have to make sure that that's kind of all sealed up. So with that, there was a lot presented tonight. Happy to answer any questions. Again, just echoing the team as far as thanks to everybody involved, all the staff, the Planning Commission, and the council along the way. I think, you know, getting back to, you know, what we, what we started this meeting with was, you know, we heard from the council loud and clear at the beginning that, you know, you all didn't feel like your kind of vision was represented in the comprehensive plan, and we wanted to, to make that right, right? And I, I feel like we've done that. I feel like with all the touchpoints, with all the discussions we've had, that we have the vision of the community, we have the vision of the Planning Commission, the council, and the staff kind of all in alignment moving forward in this document, which is great. And ultimately, this is the first major update to, over, I, I won't say update, this is an overhaul of our comprehensive plan, the first one since it was adopted, the first GMA plan adopted in nineteen ninety-four. So by going to this web-based comp plan, it has made us kind of adjust and make sure that we have, you know, a future-forward comprehensive plan, the first one in thirty years. And so this is not only a comprehensive plan update, this is, for all intents and purposes, a new comprehensive plan for the city. So happy to take any feedback, any questions, comments you have at this point.
It's funny, because when we started this process, we thought this was gonna be kind of just a quick update to, and yet, as we went through it, we ended up being a complete overhaul. So, you know, that is a lot of work, considering where we were at two years ago, and we thought, let's, oh, there's just a quick refresh, and here we are a couple of years later.
Yeah, it just, it became very apparent early in the process that, you know, if we were actually going to bring the idea of visioning the future into the twenty-first century, this was the route you needed to go.
Yeah.
You don't just keep, you know, taking a pencil eraser to, to align in your comp plan and penciling in what you want. So like I said, we're very proud of what we did.
I just want to say, I really appreciate how much public input you got this time. I mean, reaching, contacts with sixty thousand people is tremendous effort. Ton of work, obviously, on your part, but I think that, that makes it so, this is the community's comprehensive plan. We have, that should give you the kind of buy-in that we want. We want residents to be involved in what we're doing here. And that's just an incredible amount of input that we've never seen, I don't think, on anything else we've done in the city that I can think of. So thank you for the work. I really appreciate all of it.
Councilor, step in.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, mentioned that a couple of us worked on this one before, but my unique experience was at the very end and then trans, trans, transitioning right to council and approving it. But people, I don't think, understand the amount of work and, and stuff that the Planning Commission does on this document and this, these policies. You know, we had two doctors on our commission, Dr. Savdi and Dr. Bueller, and we literally went word by word in that hundreds of pages that document as a whole. And, you know, they're English ma, English doctors, doctors in English. So, you know, every single word, every, you know, everything was, no stone was unturned, let's put it that way. So, you know, hats off to the Planning Commission. I know all the work and, that goes into this. So they deserve every bit of accolades and, and thanks, and so I'll leave it at that.
You guys have definitely reset the bar. So congratulations there, even though, you know, when we were in work session and, and we saw comp plan on the, on the agenda, knowing that was gonna be an hour, hour and a half, we still definitely appreciated all the touchpoints that you guys did and all the community outreach and, and the, the, what was I gonna say? You guys did a lot of touchpoints, you guys did a lot of community outreach, you guys came back to council with a lot, and you shared pictures of your field trips. So-
So I know that, you know, one of the issues that we've had, especially with our urban growth areas, that we've done our comp plan updates, and yet the, it didn't automatically transition to the, those updates happening in our urban growth area. Because the county still has to go back and update on the county side, and it just like, it never seems to get there. And then now, you know, we're so far behind on, on our standards compared to their standards, and it's one of the reasons why we're in this mess with our urban growth area to begin, you know. Do we have a timeline on when they will adopt this? Will they adopt it immediately? Is something changed in state law where we're, we're not gonna be in this mess like we have been in the past?
I can't address state law, but you never know what will change next session. But I have had some communication with our county partners, and my understanding is they are planning on working in partnership with us as well as other cities in twenty-twenty-six to align their codes to basically cross-reference ours. So the effort that we put into our zoning amendments and our, on our actual Title XVI changes, if that is ultimately adopted at the end of the day by the county, then that would just reference right back to our, our standards across the board within the UGA.
Wow, that's, that's a big deal.
That's good to hear.
Any other questions?
One last thing, Mayor, if I may. David Burns, so I have to give credit to Ryan as well. So Ryan's in Dave's position. You know, he, he transitioned the same time I got on council to Dave's position. So that takes real leadership to accomplish what the Planning Commission has. So a lot of things goes to you as well, Ryan.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead and-
I just have one final little anecdote about this process. So, you know, you talk about community outreach and stuff. Our newest Planning Commission member was actually recruited out of the open house that we had last spring.
Right.
Jennifer, and she just, you know, talking to her at the open house was very apparent how passionate she was for her community, and she has proven to be a valuable asset on the commission.
That's great. That's good, good news. Okay, thank you. Go forward.
Next steps is there'll be a schedule list for December sixteenth for final council action on whether to adopt a comp plan. So looking forward to having that, the two-year process. I remember we set up this process over, you know, just over two years ago with council, talking about that schedule. So I want to again, add my thanks to the council, the Planning Commission, and, and the staff for doing a tremendous effort with bringing this to fruition, so.
Before we close out, and you guys can, you guys are good, I'm gonna turn it back over to the city manager to give us an update on the homicides that we had.
Yes. So as council's aware, we've had a tragic event occur a couple of weeks ago with a, with a double homicide, and I'd like to have Chief Armada to kind of give a brief five-minute recap on the investigation efforts and the great work that was done by our law enforcement personnel, Lacey Police Department, and his whole team. So, Chief?
Thank you, Rick. Good evening, Council, good evening, Mayor. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'll be brief. I wanted to speak to our-
I heard that shit.
I did too.
Okay. I wanted to speak to the investigation that occurred following the events of early morning of last Friday, actually, November fourteenth. At approximately two in the morning, just before, we had a report of shots fired at the intersection of Twenty-Fourth Avenue and College Street. At the time, the entire police department that was on duty at the time was engaged at a local healthcare facility with a person that was being disruptive and trying to de-escalate him. One of the officers was able to break away and go to that location and found two subjects down from gunshot wounds in the street. Called medical aid, we provided medical aid. Unfortunately, the, both subjects died at the scene. What we had was two identified males at the scene, no witnesses, no immediate leads, pouring rain, and that's all we had. And nobody was around, except for the people that had been driving by and called in the, the call. Well, we called all the resources to the scene and processing the crime scene. It was a very interesting crime scene, and that was a very small, very confined area on a major, major roadway in our city. Usually with the number of cases we found, usually have much larger area. This is very confined. It happened very quickly. So following that, even with those factors going against us, like I said, the weather was horrible. Location, within twelve hours, detectives had made significant progress on the case by doing neighborhood canvassing, as well as seeking out a collection of data. Within forty-eight hours, detectives had obtained and executed several search warrants for data, as well as preservation letters. And by Monday, we developed a, identified a potential suspect, and worked on locating that person, and began an active surveillance. And we followed that subject all the way to Wenatchee, a very long surveillance and conducted overnight surveillance, taking him into custody the following day with the assistance of Wenatchee's PD as well as the local task force. Subsequent to that, we served search warrants here in the city of Lacey to gather evidence. That led to additional information, additional search warrants, preservation letters for capture and retain evidence of digital and forensics. That led to a second suspect. That person was located, physical surveillance of that subject. Then with the assistance of other, other agencies, we took that subject into custody and brought him in, brought him back here. The subsequent investigation really led to a lot of, a lot of work by detectives. I got to tell you, these, these folks, both the detectives on scene, our digital forensic analysts, our crime, our community resource unit, S I R T, which is our new proactive unit in partnership with Olympia and, and Tom Water, as well as bringing in FBI asset resources that assisted in the gathering of digital evidence and analysis of that evidence. They helped a lot with getting, helping our DFA gather all that information. Patrol officers assisting, assisting with the canvas, people backfilling shifts for the folks that got pulled off, out of their usual assignments to work those, work the investigation. We used our regional SWAT team, Pierce County SWAT team, the county's TNT team for part of the surveillance, and really, one of the key components of this entire investigation was the community. They provided a lot of information, both from residential cameras, as well as other, other leads that we helped to pursue. To date, we've spent over four hundred hours of overtime on this one case. So we had discussions during the last meeting about overtime at the police department, and it was like six hundred hours for the entire year. This one case, so far, we spent over four hundred hours. And that's just to get to the point of getting the case filed, getting them into custody. They're both being held with no bail currently, and the case is ongoing. It's been filed by the prosecutor's office. Couple of key points I wanted to point out was, number one, of course, to thank the community for their help in this investigation. Our investigation is ongoing. We have served dozens of search warrants in this case, as well as preservation of data requests. We're in the process of, of both having our evidence analyzed and tested. We don't believe there's any outstanding suspect at this time, but we continue to follow up on all leads, and we go wherever the evidence takes us. I just want to make sure everybody, folks, knows that this was not a random occurrence. The victims were targeted in this incident. This was not a typical drive-by where you would have, you know, spray and pray. This is very confined crime scene, very targeted for these two, targeting these two individual victims, unfortunately. And we do believe it was a case of misidentification by the suspects.
So that, that's what the media's been saying, so you do believe that is accurate?
Yes. And finally, I just want to stress, the only federal resources that we used in this investigation was the FBI, and their, their digital task force. With that, I just, again, I want to thank the community for all their help. I want to really make sure you understand all the work our officers have put into this, both initial response, crime scene management and processing, the neighborhood canvassing, which we've done repeatedly, seeking out digital evidence, any potential either visual or hearing witnesses, tracking the service of literally dozens of search warrants on this case. Our tip management, follow-up, our victimology, evidence collection processing, data acquisition analysis, suspect development, plainclothes surveillance and field work, the arrest and the post-arrest coordination, resource acquisition and management, multi-agency coordination, the peer support and wellness for our officers, the family liaisons helping them as well, and just a myriad of tasks that have been happening behind the scenes to make this all come together.
Digital resources.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, thank you for the public, for all the agencies, everyone working together on just a tragic, you know, situation in our community. Anytime anyone, you know, is, you know, shot and killed, it's just, it's horrible, but in this circumstances with mistaken, you know, mistaken identity, young, it's just, it's just a tragedy. But thank you for the professionalism that, you know, you've shown, and, and for, you know, everyone coming together to, you know, quickly, you know, find these individuals who, you know, out of town, it's just like gone from almost an impossible circumstance to just, you know, unbelievable outcome in such a short period of time. So, you know, give, you know, thank all the officers involved. We, you know, the council, the city really appreciates it.
If I could just add one little thing, and thanks, you know, to Chief Armada and the entire police department, because they do do extraordinary work, and it's, it's not in the shift and, and transfer on, they stick with it through, and it's a yeoman's effort and a team effort. And as you said, thanks to the community, because there's, you know, green cameras and other things that become available to help with this. But one of the questions that comes up from the community generally is, right now, is the flock camera system. And I just want to reiterate, in this case, we don't, we don't have flock camera systems, we don't utilize them unless, you know, they're privately owned and we ask and they're given, but we don't have flock camera systems. And as the chief said, the only federal agency we, we partnered with was the FBI. So that's why I make that one distinction as well, just in case that there's questions that come out of this in, in terms of those flock systems.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, hopefully we get justice for the victims.
Yep.
Great, great work, and just the amount, I mean, the amount of effort that went into that short, I mean, you're talking about a week, less than a week, that you had people in custody for, and that was just an amazing level of work by your department. So thank you to all of your department.
Thank you very much. I'm very proud of our department. Our detectives pulled out all the stops on this case. And again, this was a case that we've prepared for, frankly, for several years, building up to this point. The, the FTE for a digital forensic analyst, so we knew this is the kind of case we'd be coming up across. We'd be needing someone to process digital evidence, both phone evidence, video evidence, those type of things, cellular tower data. The fact that we have a proactive unit developed for surveillance, using, utilizing the best talents of all three cities, targeting and focusing on, on subjects that are, that are impacting all three cities in the metro area, developing those relationships with all our area partners and, and frankly, partners across the state for this type of investigation. So that was really part of the key part of this investigation. So thank you for giving us the resources so we can do it correctly.
Councilor Dunning, you have something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, speaking of the family, if there is anything planned or that can be done, or any ways that, that we can help and get information out there to help those affected, please, please pass that along so we can get that as much help to those families as possible.
How many detectives do we have?
So we have five, actually, six approved detective positions. We have one vacant right now, we have one on maternity leave. So plus, we brought folks back who worked detectives, or also, we have trained as evidence collection folks, as, as patrol investigators as well. So they were brought into the investigation to assist. So we, we really brought in a lot of extra resources for this case.
Okay, thank you for the update, and thank you all for all the work. It is eight forty-one, and I'm call, without objection, I'm call this work session adjourned. And as always, keep it classy, Lacey.